I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors Wednesday, October 21st at 6:30 PM. May we have public and members of the board, me included, please remember to silence your telephones so we don't interrupt too many items in people's conversations. And I would like to ask the public to join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please, George Hand?
Here.
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 Director of the House?
Here.
Director of the House?
President.
Okay, we're going to move into the agenda item number two, but I'm going to remove item number two B from the consent calendar as we have a recommended update on that service facilities agreement. Therefore, the only item we have on the consent calendar is the approval of minutes. Do we have anybody, do we need to remove that one? Or do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent calendar as amended.
I say that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. It passes five zero. We will go right now then and pick up that item two A for discussion on the proposed change. And George, you or Dustin is going to be leading this, I think?
I'll start. It's two B. This is a normal developer agreement. We had sent a developer agreement through legal counsel last year and thinking that we had caught in all the latest and greatest, we just proceeded with this one. And in Dustin's review of the board packet, he, this caught his eye. There was a change in the law on January 1st of 2015 that requires contractors working on public works projects to register with the Department of Industrial Relations and pay prevailing wage on that work. It's our opinion that even though this is a private developer project, the part of the work that they're doing that will be dedicated to PID is also qualifies as prevailing wage work. So Dustin's provided additional language that references the newer law and directs the contractor, any subcontractor, to follow those rules that cover those things I just discussed. So we needed amendment to the agreement. If you approve it, we'll go back to the developer and get them to sign it. We've already contacted them, let them know about the change. I don't know that they're here to speak on it or not today, but just so you're aware. Do you want anything?
No. Okay, the way I understand this, it's got a sentence in here that says if the owner disagrees with the district and authorizes work on the improvement system without payment of the prevailing wages, the owner then is just agreeing to indemnify us, hold us harmless, and protect us from...
And that language has not changed. That's standard language that has been in past agreements. The change necessitated by the change in law is the last two sentences.
Starts with neither owner nor any contractor?
Labor code.
Yeah, and a little bit before that, there was a cleanup on the code sections, there was a renumbering of the code sections in the labor code, and then the code of regulations. And then, you're right, that sentence starting with neither owner nor any contractor is new required by the state.
I move we approve the water.
Well, I'll ask one more question before I'll ask that. But the other question is, is this owner registered with the Department of Industrial Relations?
I don't know. You know, it's a unique situation. It's not our contractor. We have...
Right, I understand that.
We have an agreement with the owner, that's what this agreement is. And then the owner contracts with a contractor that may or may not be registered. We hope that person is, that entity is. But that's an owner obligation. We're providing the notice, that's the extent of the district's obligation.
And is that okay? We don't have the obligation to ensure that they're registered, at least that far? That they're registered with the Department of Industrial Relations?
Not on a project of this type. There is, there may be, we're running this to ground.
If we were doing the project...
Pardon me?
If we were doing the project...
If you were doing the project, there would be different requirements.
Now, I understand. Thank you.
And if we're doing the project, we actually notify the Department of Industrial Relations. We have a project, here it is, it gets assigned a project number.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it, and they're looking for the contractor that raises his hands and says, yep, I'm the one working on that. He's working on whether on this type of situation, we have to make that notice to the state or not. We'll figure that out.
Well, before I ask for a motion then, would anybody in the public like to comment on this item that was brought forth? There being none, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the water service facility agreement as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes five zero. Okay, a little commercial here before we move to the next item. It's in regard to public participation. That is what is coming up. This portion of the public participation is for items that are not on the scheduled agenda tonight. If there's something on the scheduled agenda that you want to speak to, well, you'll wait until that time, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak in that particular section. So this is for general things that are not on the agenda. You may speak to anything you want to, actually. And the board is not going to discuss or debate or take any action on anything you might bring up in this particular meeting. And we're going to limit the time for public participation to five minutes per person. So if there's anything at this time the public would like to address that's not on the agenda, now's your time.
Thank you. Good evening, board and district members. Two things, and of course, I like it when I can bring some good news.
Board, you've got a lot of new people here tonight, you need to introduce yourself.
Yes, I suppose. I am wearing my Paradise Garden Club name badge tonight, and I'm pleased to announce that it is that time again when the Paradise Garden Club has daffodil bulbs, which will help beautify our community. As you know, Paradise Garden Club has made donations as well as sales to PID for improvement of our properties here. We have also done that in several places around town and continue to do that. However, since you are a portion of what we would consider town leaders, we also appreciate it if you and your property are beautified through the use of daffodils provided by the Paradise Garden Club. So if there is anyone on the board or on staff who would like to get a heck of a deal on some premium daffodil bulbs from the Paradise Garden Club, for a $25 donation, you can get a whole bag of 100 bulbs. They'll be beautiful, and guess what? They are extremely drought tolerant. You don't have to water them after winter, and they just keep replaying themselves year after year after year. One of the greatest little flowers, called the flower of hope. Isn't that something we could use on the ridge? I think it's a great thing. You can let me know or contact the Paradise Garden Club through their website, and we'll get you some bulbs. We could even deliver thousands of them right here, and you could just pay right through the front door. We'd be happy with that. Second thing, I know several of you have seen that little video segment on the PID website that shows a guy doing some composting and mulching to help save water. You can see the whole thing live come this Saturday at the Paradise Grange from 9 to 11 for 10 bucks. The whole two-hour segment, 9 to 11, Paradise Grange, will have that basic composting demonstration. Thank you for your time.
Where is the Paradise Grange?
Paradise Grange on Chapel Drive across the street from James' home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If you would like to, would you please?
Do I have to stand over there?
Over there. I understand there are people...
These are important people. I'm right at the hall.
Hard of hearing people, and we need to get it on the record.
I only have a concern. You know, from two, three years ago, you were, when I used to come to these meetings because you were talking about really important things, you were going to build that filtration plant. And I expected you to raise everybody's bill by at least 10 bucks a month to cover the expense of that. Now, what I'm reading has nothing at all, our rate increase has nothing at all to do with that filtration plant. And so, are you going to raise my water bill again?
Are you here to talk about something that's on the agenda later on?
That's on the agenda.
That filtration plant is?
No, the raising of rates.
But my concern is, not that rate increase, but are you going to raise my rate again to build a filtration plant?
Absolutely.
That's what I worried about. And so I don't want you to keep going up, up, up. And I kind of wanted my concern on record because I don't think that 10 bucks you're getting is going to go away. So I wanted to make sure it's going to pay for something.
Okay, now, you're talking about our agenda item later on.
That's only about this rate increase. I'm talking about the next one.
You just said the $10 increase that we're talking about.
Well, I know three years ago, we were talking about $10.
Anyhow, would you go ahead and make your statement and move on to something that's not on the agenda.
And so, please, don't charge me again for a filtration plant increase. That concerns me. So thank you kindly. Remember that. Write it down in big print.
Thank you, Loretta. Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Jim Czysinski. I'm from District Four. I have a couple of items I want to discuss or comment on first thing out of the chute. My first question is, I've been looking at on the website on the listing of the meetings and the minutes in the meetings, and almost universally, it takes approximately four weeks to get those minutes posted. And in some cases, the minutes have been posted for the previous month after the next month's meeting. There's actually been a delay of like five weeks or so.
In all cases, we don't post the minutes until the board approves them.
Why does it take a month?
Because we meet once a month.
So there is no other process by which you can post the minutes that occurred prior to?
You can view them in the board packet.
Uh-huh.
You know, like...
But we produce that three days, four, five days before the meeting.
Because I've gone there sometimes to look at what the proceedings were on the previous meeting because I couldn't make the meeting or something like that.
Yeah.
Thinking maybe there might have been a subject that was carried on to the next meeting. Well, if you can't get access to it, then you don't know if the items are carried on the next meeting. You don't know necessarily what's coming up. You know, you can look at the agenda when that's posted, but it would be nice to have minutes of the meeting online prior to the next meeting. That would, you know...
The board hasn't approved them for us before we release them.
Yeah.
We do have audio of the meetings.
Uh-huh.
That goes up on the website about three days after, three to a week, audio of the meeting.
As I'm listening to it.
Then it goes up?
Yeah. Jim can request a board packet, though, that gets released on Thursday or Friday before the meeting, right?
It goes online at the same time.
It goes online at the same time, right?
Yeah.
So I was just kind of wondering if there's any way to expedite that process. Apparently not, because you're only meeting once a month.
Just the audio. That's when we get to see it, too.
Yeah. Okay, that was my first question. Then my next question is that the, something along the lines of what lately we're talking about with the filtration plant, the water, the recycle water treatment plant, and that's not on the agenda for tonight. But I know there's been some discussion about the cost, and I've seen some of the printouts on it, it's approximately $7.2 million, something like that, is the estimate I've seen so far.
I think it's 10 or 11, 10 million.
It's even higher than that now, okay. The thing of it is, is that I was wondering, I haven't heard anything about the district going out and looking for some monies to build that other than the water users here. California Proposition 1, the water bond that passed last year, okay? I did a little research on that, and quickly, it says authorization 7.12 billion in general obligation for state water supply infrastructure projects such as public water system improvements, surface groundwater, water recycling, and advanced water treatment technology, wastewater treatment, drought relief, watershed protection and restoration. And then it goes on to say, the state water pollution control revolving funds, small community grant fund, has two $520 million available for grants for people, small districts, to do improvements and things like this. And there's $725 million for water recycling and advanced water treatment technology projects. All this money is out there. Has the district applied to the state for any of these funds?
There are funds for grants, and there are funds for loans, and we are aware of them. And if you'd like, you can contact George and find out what items that we have in the works for people to put forth our grant requests and the low-cost loan requests.
Right. And I was thinking that that is a resource that we should be looking at. We're all paying for that water bond, that some of that money should come back to us, and especially if we can get a grant. That would relieve a tremendous burden off the water users here in the department.
You'd think that's the way the state works, but not always.
Well, yeah, I understand that the state doesn't always work in logical ways. But the idea that this was a state mandated thing, and the state funds may be available if you write the grant properly or request properly, at least or low interest loan perhaps, long-term, might be something that we could, might be feasible. Rather than lay the whole burden on the water consumers, we should look at some of the money that's out there. You know that MWD, SMUD, LA Water and Power, East Bay Utility District, they're all reaching out there trying to grab as much of that money as they can. And they've got lawyers working on that and trying to snuck up as much of that. So we should get a little bit of it, too?
I agree.
That's my thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Just about used your whole five minutes.
Jim brought up a good point. Didn't we pay $25,000 for somebody to run down grants for us?
The answer to that question is no.
Didn't we, well, we give them a budget of $25,000 to work on.
That's right. The answer to that is yes.
Okay. All right. Could we sometime in the near future get a report of that if we're getting any results of that somewhere?
The answer to that is yes. We can present the information of what we've spent and what they've done.
I have never done this before, but I was concerned with the new pipe...
If you don't mind, would you like to introduce yourself?
My name's Josh Worthington.
And are you one of our constituents in this?
I'm in the public. I'm a property owner here in Paradise. I pay my taxes, and I pay my water bill. My concern is the new pipes that you're putting on Pearson Road, A, what's taking so long? B, are you guys going to make the mess that you made on Elliott? Because I drive Elliott every day, and I have an SUV with wider tires, and I have to drive over the double yellow line to safely make it down the road if I have a choice because it won't stay on the road. So I see that you came back after the fact, after a lot of people complained, and repaired the road again. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yeah, these are town roads.
Okay, but Paradise Irrigation District was the truck and the people with the thing on their logo that dug the road up, replaced the pipe, put the patch on there, and made a big lump like a speed bump.
According to the town's specifications, we repaired the road exactly the way they wanted.
So what I'm asking is, are we going to expect the same with Pearson Road that was just redone and looks real pretty?
Expect what about the...
Are we going to have the way they first did Elliott before people made it stink? I'm concerned that Pearson Road is going to have a big lump after.
You are.
That makes it difficult to drive. And in my opinion, is poor quality work.
Yeah. Is the town finished with their repair there on Pearson? Their repaving that they're doing?
Intersection, but we will still have repaving where we're putting pipe in the ground.
Yeah, where we're still doing that, yeah. And it'll be paved exactly, level, with the foundation and...
Are you familiar with the Elliott Road about four years ago?
Yes, I'm sure. Our patches are what are smooth. What is not smooth is the balance of the road.
Not originally.
It is now.
It is now.
It has been that way.
It is now.
Okay. Well, thank you for your, was there anything else that you wanted to bring up?
No, I just was concerned about that, and I thought it was more important to ask before instead of ask after.
I would like to say something to this.
We're not supposed to.
Yeah, we've been doing a little bit of stuff.
The president doesn't allow anybody else to speak about something that's coming up? It doesn't sound right to me.
Are you listening to me, Bill? I said, go ahead.
I didn't hear that. I heard Larry.
Yeah, I know.
All I did was, we're not supposed to.
We try to stay away from it, but go ahead.
Oh, all right.
Clock's running.
Josh talked to me about that, and I had a fellow that I knew, I still know a friend from my lodge, that experienced that, and I complained, and I thought it was fixed. But Josh is telling me...
Actually, I was wrong when I said it wasn't fixed. I drove it that same day, and it actually is fine now, yeah.
It's okay?
It is now, yes. It was, after you said something, I went and drove it again, and well, no, it has been, it's satisfactory now. But for about a year and a half, I drove it every day, and it was very frustrating. It was not the way I wanted to start my morning fighting the road, trying to stay in the middle of the road and not...
But it's okay now.
It is now, yeah. I just would hate to see the same thing happen on Pearson Road. I don't think it's you or anybody here, I just think the people that actually put the stuff down and didn't do it correctly and tried to let that slide.
Would you like to address it, George?
I would. We've had quite a few discussions about this.
Okay. And I'm not trying to be a smart...
And when we work closely with the town, some roads is very difficult.
Okay.
Over on Elliott, you had an old road that was just chip seal after chip seal after chip seal.
Okay.
And so to try and get a flat pipeline paving to match to something that's doing this is difficult. We did our best job we could, but now you've got a really well-structured pipe, and then you've got a roadway that doesn't have adequate substructure to it. Over on Pearson, that's a newer road, newer substructure, et cetera, should be easier to pave, too. I would expect us to have no problems matching grade there and not have any issues that you saw over on Elliott.
Okay, that's, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Any other public comments?
Can I not?
No. Any other public comments? There being none, we'll move on to the approval of the checks for September. And for those of you who have questions, anybody want to volunteer to start?
I'll go.
Okay. Start down there.
Because I only have one. Let me get here real quick. It's on the loans, I think next to, or the last page, iPad page 34. Vendor, US Bank Trust. What are those the loan payments on?
That's for the 2,009 CFPs for the meter replacement project.
That's what I thought.
What was it?
Meter replacement project.
Oh.
That is half of our total debt service for the whole year.
Here, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Kevin, could you speak up? I had a hard time hearing you.
Meter replacement project. It's for the meter replacement project loan.
Okay, thank you.
How much do we owe on that now?
Five mil.
Five, six mil.
Little, I think it's less than five mil, but I think it's right around that. I'd have to look it up exactly.
You know, normally, our monthly checks are someplace between 500,000 and 600,000.
No. Because he's asking the question, so if it's going to be an editorial, we'll save it.
That it?
That was it.
Well, that's it. He's done.
Okay.
Me? Okay, let's see, what do I got? Not very many of them. On page 27, a bunch of safety supplies for the shop. What are those?
For which one?
North Valley barricade.
Oh.
The 1,013 something.
I would...
15.
North Valley barricade?
If I were to guess, it was signage.
Yeah.
Signs and cones, I think.
Oh, okay. It was a lot of money, I just didn't realize we were buying that much.
We had a lot of traffic redirection on Pearson that...
Oh, Pearson, we needed to do it.
More than we normally do, so...
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
We had to load up a little bit.
Okay, page 31.
I'm going to follow up on that. I didn't understand, did we buy that or is that rental?
That's purchased.
That's purchased.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on page 31, rental guys. What was that?
That is the two signs you see on Skyway warning people about construction.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. And who are these, okay. How much longer are they going to be up?
Probably while we're pipelining, till we're done pipelining.
When is that going to be?
We, what Jim said, we should have November sometime, we're getting close to the pipe work. And then the problem is, is we're going to hit a period of time where asphalt isn't available every day, so then it's going to be a matter of whether they're making asphalt or not, which days we can go out and pave. So it's hard to say exactly when it'll be done.
Is it the weather or the temperature or something?
Yeah, and how much work they have. Because most overlays and stuff around the area are done in the summer months, and so that plant has, when it turns on, it needs to be selling pavement all day long for a project like that. We only use five, 10 tons a day, and that's not worth them turning the plant on.
Turning it on, oh, okay. I think that was one of the problems with Elliott, too, was the weather, why it took so long.
Yeah, we wintered over on that project, too.
Right. Okay, the other thing, it's not very much money, but it's permit with the town for $28 on page 33.
We had to redo the roof and the rental house.
Oh, and the rental house, oh, okay.
So we needed a permit for that.
Permits, they give us everything, don't they?
Oh, sorry. Our crews did the work on that, but we had to pull the permit.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Doug, would you like to speak to items?
Yeah, I have a couple. One that I started mentioning before, our normal checks are someplace between 500 to $600,000 a month. And then I looked at this one, and I said, my God, a million bucks, $997,000. Well, then I looked back what Seth was talking about, and it was a payment of, oh, basically $30,000. And that's twice a year in it. What's a year, okay, that's twice a year on that.
That's over half of our annual debt service, that one payment.
So that's where that came in. And then I've got two, three items here, but page 23, diesel emissions services, repair of unit 22 for the skid steer. There's still, I thought we were pretty well on top of that, but we had a repair to do. Had to cost a thousand bucks.
$2,000.
$2,000, yeah.
Whatever it was, yeah.
Yeah, so we...
The one that I'm looking at is $1,167.
That's for lab fees.
Yeah, that's lab.
I'm below it, 2110.
2110.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, on that skid steer, we have an emissions thing that creates...
That $1,100, you're off on.
Yeah, that's...
That's frame or engineering lab fees. So there, there's what you're interested in, skid steer.
So it's emission, the emissions problem.
Well, it's that filter, car, carbon.
That's compliance filter.
That's. We had to do that.
Yeah, that was one of the pieces of equipment. We got, uh, covered seventy-five percent of the cost on a grant.
Yeah.
But it had to have the latest and greatest emissions and it was right when the program first started. So, yeah, uh, you remember, we, we had a budget item a while ago for all the tobacco's having to be redone and this is another issue was trying to get those operating correctly.
I thought they were starting to slack off or something, but perhaps they're not. I know they are on trucks.
Not on government.
Not government. But trucks is backing off of it particularly if it causes a hazard. It's, in fact, it's getting the paper on TV and all kinds of stuff. And we're talking about trucks that go year-round, not just egg trucks, you know, for the harvest and things like that. But anyway, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Doug. Bill, would you have items?
Yeah, I have a couple. One is on page twenty-three. It, it's Comcast for six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. It's for internet for the month, I assume. And I'm wondering why we haven't found some service that would be less. It seems to me that a lot of internet charges have come down the last few years. I know we might have areas where we have to have a dish or something, but.
Well, when you, uh, when you're dealing with business, internet rates and the amount of data we move and the speeds we need, uh, they're not in the same price range as the ads you see for, in your house. So when you get into the business world, um, it is what it is. We've looked at T-one lines, um, and, and, uh, other options and they're just, they're not much less and they're not near as reliable. So we've gone with Comcast and that's actually under a government rate. So that's a, I believe, a state contracted rate with Comcast. Um, so that's about as big as you can get.
And we, and we just switched the treatment plan over to Comcast, so we are constantly looking at the rates, cause we were with AT&T and they were more expensive than Comcast was. So.
So we recently have looked at rates or.
Yeah, we constantly look at the rates.
Then the next question's on page twenty-five. Actually, I should ask Jim this, I guess, because it's a general chemical performance aluminum sulfate. I assume this is going to the treatment plant?
Yes.
And what's it for?
It's a quagmire for filters and fire fires.
It's our source of aluminum.
And that's why we have aluminum that we, that we can't get out of it.
Settling agent, particles.
Yes.
Settling agent.
Population, contamination.
It's a byproduct of that.
Yeah, well, the wetland, white commentary on that is the wetlands will, can take the aluminum out, but that's not germane to what we're doing here.
No.
On the same page, sodium hydrochloride. This is the new product we're using and, uh, is this the new product, Jim, we're using sodium hyperchloride we spent thirty-one hundred dollars for?
Yes, it's, we switched from chlorine gas to sodium hydrochloride.
And this is safer for our people working in the plant, right?
Much safer, yes.
Is it less expense or about the same?
No, it's more.
But the point was to protect our workers.
Well, the public.
And the public.
I forget the public.
Yeah, cause it goes out.
Well, if you read, if an accident happens up there and you read the cautions and what has to be done, you'd be very happy that we're using the safest product we can get.
Right.
Chloride is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Gas is awful.
Yeah, that new product that we're using, and I've got to ask you this, uh, do we get more or less chloro-bromomethate out of it?
That is the same act.
About to say, huh?
Gas does, creates the same type of chloro-azotion ion that gas does, basically the same.
Basically the same.
Okay, we infringed. Back to Bill.
On page twenty-eight, uh, right at the top of the page, Protec three oh one ZOP.
Zinc ortho phosphate. Um, that's what we use to help protect steel pipes. Uh, and this was in the agenda last month, I think.
Right, these, these large chemical purchases go to the board.
How often do we buy those, that one?
Zinc, is that, almost a year's worth. That's almost a year's worth.
Aluminum sulfate more often.
Yeah.
I would hope so. Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
It's made a huge difference in helping maintain our steel pipes and our customers' steel pipes as well as our tanks. And we do a, a test, Jason does testing on that with metal coupons to check its usefulness and make sure it's getting throughout the district. And it does a good job. That's one of our best spent thirty-eight thousand dollars.
iPad page thirty. At the bottom of, the top of the page, it has a carryover for, uh, with pace supply for twenty-three, twenty-nine thousand. Then on the next page on Robertson Rune, you have to go to the next page on that too, I think. Let's see, yeah. And that's two thousand six hundred. I, they're both supplying us with brass and galvanized fittings. Is there a reason we use one supplier more so than the other?
Lowest bid.
Huh?
Lowest bid.
Lowest bid?
Out to bid, yeah.
So this is all going out to bids on those two things?
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's it. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, Doug already talked about it. Can't, no, no.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else to bring up than what's already been talked about.
I'll make a motion to approve September checks. General fund check numbers four eight, four two nine through four eight, five four oh for the month of September twenty fifteen, totaling nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight and six cents. Exclusive avoided check numbers four eight, four five two and four eight, five two six and authorize, authorization of a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of October twenty fifteen.
Second.
Thank you very much. At this particular point, would the public have any questions about the bills that we paid over the last month or this process at this time? Any, any public participation in this item? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Passes five zero. We're now going to be moving into a closed session. Not gonna take us very long. We don't often do this. We more likely schedule our closed sessions at the beginning before the board meeting starts or the very last item on the agenda. Uh, but we're gonna be gone for a few minutes. Uh, the, the closed session is a conference with legal counsel about anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. There's one case that we have. And at this particular point, I know this sounds a little silly, but I'm gonna ask if the public wants to make any comments or address that prior to us going in. We'll do our business, get back out here as quickly as possible. I'll make an announcement about what, uh, we can announce out of a closed session and then we'll move into the next items in the agenda. So would the public like to speak to this item? All right, then we're gonna get our closed business done with and I'll reconvene the regular meeting and announce that direction was given to legal counsel regarding the closed session topic. We're now moving to old business and we don't have any, so we're moving to item eight, which is new business. And the first topic on the agenda here is eight A, emergency drought surcharge and capacity fee expenses. Consider adopting a per meter surcharge and to use the capacity fees fund that we already have to reimburse the district's general fund for capacity increasing pipeline projects that were constructed from July first, two thousand four, July first, two thousand fourteen to the present date. And, uh, Director Phillips, would you like to?
I'll start.
George, you're gonna lead this end of this.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're here tonight on this topic, cause we're working our way through a Prop two eighteen rate change process. It takes some time to do that. We wanna make sure it's right. But in the meantime, um, we've got cash needs that Kevin can talk a little more about and, and those details. But, um, this has been exacerbated by the state, uh, requirements that we cut back thirty-six percent in conservation. Um, have, I'll remind you, as left to our own plans, we would have asked our customers to cut twenty percent, but because of state mandates, we had to go thirty-six. Um, and our people responded and they responded well and, and that, as, that's appreciated. But unfortunately, it cuts back our revenue. Um, and so we, just in the four months of this new fiscal year, we've, we've, we're down three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from what we had budgeted. Um, keep in mind, we have a largely fixed cost delivery system. So when we deliver half the water or as we did in the months of the summer, if we deliver forty-one percent less water, it doesn't cost us forty-one percent less to provide that service. Um, ninety-seven percent of our costs are fixed through employee wages, loans, all of our regular expenses. Uh, we, we're blessed because we have a water supply above the town, so most of our water is delivered by gravity. So that's why you don't get a lot of variability. Um, if you're in the valley and you're not pumping as much from wells that are four hundred feet down, um, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna get a lower PG&E bill when you deliver less water. But that's not the case with PID. So as much as we appreciate the reduction in use and allowing us to not be fined by the state, uh, the downside is, is we're, we're lacking revenue that we, um, anticipated, uh, going forward. Kevin, I'll let you kind of jump in at that point.
Yeah, so we, we've, we've, and this is something that we've realized, um, through the last budget year. Um, and starting this budget year, we, we realized that we were gonna be down some revenue. We didn't realize the amount of revenue that it was gonna be over this last four months. Um, so we actually did budget quite a bit less revenue than we had budgeted in the past. Um, it's even, so even with that three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars below revenue, we already decreased our budget from one budget to the next three hundred thousand dollars. So we're actually, from historical standpoint, we're actually down almost seven hundred thousand dollars from what we normally had budgeted. And the board did a rate increase in a rate study in two thousand twelve or two thousand eleven and it, when you, when you do a rate study, you take into estimates. You estimate what you feel like you're gonna be taking in revenue over that period of that rate study, but also what's gonna be past that rate study. And so we put into rates that were actually very minimal rate increases. We were, we, it was a downtime in the economy. The board took on, uh, that as, to, to not impact the customers, uh, the least amount. So we, we did a rate increase to, to basically bring us down to the minimal amounts of operations through that time and then through two thousand fifteen and through two thousand sixteen. So based on that, we had kind of conservative estimates, but they're historical estimates on what concert, or what quantity charges we would be taking in. And we are down over seven hundred thousand dollars based on those estimates, based on that minimal rate increase. Um, the board has absorbed these losses through reserves the past two budget years. Um, they've been eating up their reserves and trying to make the last, least impact on the customer and not just going after them immediately to go, "Oh, we're down, we're down some revenue, let's go after them right now." But what we were trying to do was trying to kind of lead us into where we could get a good cost study together and then when we do our new rate, uh, structure, that we could take that into consideration and kind of recoup those rates at that time. Well, with this and, and showing that, that it's just this decrease over these last three months, um, that's why we're recommending right now for the, for the board to kind of do something now instead of waiting to, to kind of make sure that we, as a district, are in somewhat financial health, the minimal health, to get us through this drought time and then to, so that when we do put in this rate, new rate structure, that we're actually solvent enough to then now we can kind of go forward and, and, uh, start building up those reserves that we've depleted through these downtimes of this revenue. So, um, that's, that's why the, the staff is recommending, uh, what we're recommending. Also, um, we have been paying for the pipeline capacity. When we do pipeline, we actually are increasing capacity within the district. We've collected capacity fees through, uh, many, many, many years. So a capacity fee is if somebody comes and connects to the district, they pay a fee to get capacity to that meter. So they're kind of paying for the water that's coming to that meter. Um, and those, those fees are specific. They have to be used on specific projects, meaning that they have to be used on capacity increasing projects. When our, when our crews go out and fix pipes, we are increasing capacity, not only because we're saving water from leak, leaks, but a lot of times we're upsizing pipes. So we're getting bigger capacity within the district. So, um, so what I'm recommending to the board is that we haven't, and historically, we haven't used those fees for pipeline projects, but I'm recommending to the board that we actually take those fees, those, that reserve that we've built up and actually use those for the projects and actually reimburse the district for the projects that we've already paid for out of the general fund in the last year, sixteen months. Um, that will actually help the general fund, um, increase its reserves also approximately eight hundred thousand dollars, um, and, and pay for some of these larger expenses that we're, we're continuously having to pay for, so.
Thank you. Before I, uh, ask the public for any comments or, or, or concerns or questions, do we need any clarification from board members, from staff about what we're talking about and where we are? Anything at this particular point?
I'd like us to divide the motion in half from, take the ten dollar meter fee per month and the using of capacity fees and make them into, make it into two motions.
We can certainly do that when we get ready to, uh, make a motion, if anybody's gonna make one.
I'd like to say something. Um, I've been on the board for quite a few years and the last rate increase, I fought very hard to keep it very low, even though I knew that in three or five years, we were gonna have to increase because everything goes up. At the time, we, we didn't realize there was gonna be a drought also. So therefore, everything we planned went kabooey. And then the state came along and even demanded that we reduce our usage more, which reduced our revenue. And, uh, so I, I feel that I'm a very conservative person. Now, the, the way I look at it is, we've lost this money in revenue. What does that mean? That means you guys haven't spent that money. So therefore, now we're asking for it back. So the money you saved by reducing your use in water, we're now asking for it back because, because of the drought. But so what I'm saying is, it's gonna cost you more, but you've already saved money by cutting back, which is what we, which is what the state wanted us to do and which, what we had to do. If we didn't have automatic meters that we put in several years ago, we would be very low in water. That, what that's done is it's helped us find leaks and it's helped us find leaks for you people so that you didn't have wasted water in your thing. So everything we've been doing, we've been doing to help the customer. And I just want you to realize that you're our main concern. That's my feelings. I'm the only, that's my feelings, not the board's.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna be going to the public and asking for public comments and participation. The rules are basically the same. They're on, if you wanna refresh or they're on the back of your agenda. Uh, I'll, I'll ask for the public to participate. We will, we'll, we'll limit the, uh, the time spent to five minutes per person, hoping that some are just up for thirty seconds and not too many are up for five, five minutes. The first one we're gonna start with is gonna be Lauren, because he has his hand up, but, just so you know. Um, so you have an opportunity to speak one time to us, uh, and let us know your feelings. Do, please do not engage the staff or legal counsel in direct conversation, direct your comments to the board. Uh, we may answer, we may ask for clarification, we'll do whatever the board does. Who knows what five different guys will do. Um, but that's the way that we will do it. You're up once and then if you're back down, like Loretta found out earlier on public participation, you don't get a bite at the apple twice. It's, it's just once. And, uh, if you're going over five minutes, with my little handy dandy high-tech timer here, I will let you know and ask you to, to wind it up and stop. Uh, but there is no also borrowing of five minutes from your next door neighbor. We, we don't allow bequests of, of time. So with those regulations, our first, uh, public speaker will be Lauren.
Thank you, Board. Lauren Harvey. I come here sometime in the summer of forty-seven. First, I'd like to start off with, I'd, I'd like to ask for the volunteer resignation of the general manager and the treasurer, uh, because they should have saw this coming. We pay them big money, uh, to the tune of almost two hundred thousand and about a hundred and thirty thousand. And, and, uh, if they, if they didn't see this coming, then they're not doing their job. And if they did see it coming and they didn't, and they didn't cut back, then they're not, they're not doing their job. So plus, I, I wanted to be first because I know that a lot of people in here tonight probably don't realize the board gave them a raise, a bonus, uh, along about July of this year. They should have known they were running out of money in, in good, in good conscience. They should have, they should have, uh, passed up on that. But they don't mind taking their raise even though they had us cut back. And, and you should have known it too, Mr. Duncan, cause you're an accountant here in town. So you should have realized that the district was running out of money too, if you can actually add. So that, that I'd like to bring up. Uh, the other thing is, is, uh, we use less, we paid less. The other thing is, is we use less, we paid less, but we, we use less. So your argument that we cut back and that we can, and that we didn't spend it, and so all we're going to do is spend what we saved that you just give to the public here is bogus because we got less. We got less water, we paid less total bill. But we did not get the same amount of water and pay less. So it's not like the public cheated the district. We used less because we were instructed to. We got a lower bill because we did use less. But a good treasurer and a good general manager should have saw this on their horizon two years. It's been running now. And handing out, the board handing out bonuses to folks when this is coming up. Everybody, everybody knew that you guys were running out of money. Part of the board member's been saying, you're spending way too much. It's, it's been happening a long time. I've been coming to these things. So the only good redeeming thing is, is the workers. The workers are tied to the SSI. So they won't be getting a raise this year because we're not going to get a raise pensioners or not. So that's a good thing. But I wonder whether the general manager and the contract treasurer are going to accept a raise in light of the fact that everybody else is not going to get one. So I just wanted to make the public aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ward Habril?
Thank you, President Hunt. Good evening, Board. Ward Habril. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I took my badge off. This is not from the garden club, although I, you know, I get a lot of feedback from members of the garden club and they appreciate the partnership we've had over the years. First, I'd like to object to the worst word, emergency. Droughts are not an emergency. The 99-year history of this district has experienced droughts since day one. It's not an emergency. It's normal here. This is not the first time the reservoir has been this low. I've known several people from back in the 70s that said, we couldn't launch. Why not? There wasn't any water. We've had serious droughts many, many times. This is not an emergency. This is normal. When this is what's normal, just echoing what Lauren said, we got to plan for that kind of normal. Now granted, most of the time, we do plan well. We do manage finances well. Unfortunately, we're at a point now where the people have done what we were supposed to do. If we were to pay more now because we didn't use, using your analysis, would you give us more water for the extra money we would be paying? That'd just be wasteful. But frankly, that's what it would be worth for us to give you more money that we had saved. You would give us more water. Well, right now, if we're still seven feet above where we were last year, sure, you could probably do that, but it doesn't make sense to do that. So there isn't a trade-off there. We give you more money, you don't give us more water. That's just not fair. I think, putting Lauren's words a little bit differently, the public is probably going to speak mostly to the point that this is not good timing for asking for more money when we're hurting for money too. And frankly, some of us are going to be looking, as we get to a rainy season, of buying more plants to replace what died. I'm looking at over $1,000 worth of expenses to replace what I've allowed to die. And I'm going to do that very, very carefully because I'm buying plants that are much more drought tolerant than what I've had in the past. Because in the past, yeah, I was pretty good at conserving water, but I still had to cut back much further this year than I did last year, which was a big cutback for me. So I'm at the point now where I'm thinking, uh-uh, no more money. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
John Rimayalaya, I'm a Paradise property owner and also Paradise business owner. When I saw this, whether we call it an emergency excise tax or a special, I started thinking about the state laws on rate increases. And I'm sure you're all aware of them. I've heard you talk about them many times in the last four or five months. We have a set procedure that's established by the state for doing rate increases with public input and feedback on it. And if the feedback's positive, go ahead and do it. If it's negative, you have to jump through additional hoops. It requires a study. We were told that that process was going to be in place probably somewhere, I don't know, January. You know, it's coming very quickly. To go right now and do a 10% per meter charge, when some people, that's 20%, some people, that's 30%, I mean, it's a, it's a substantial increase.
Just, just so you know, the increase is $10 per meter.
Per meter, yeah, but if you have a $40 bill average per month, it's, I think you're, probably your cheapest bill per month is $27. So it's substantially, it's a substantial increase. It's not a 1%, a 2%. People are lucky right now if they're getting a 2% pay increase. I see the teachers fighting between a 2% and a 5% and all this. That kind of increase is big. I'm going to compare this to myself. I've went through some health problems in the last 18 months. I have a business. I haven't been able to produce or produce the revenue that I typically would have. I can't raise my prices or I'm not going to sell product and I'll be in worse shape. I've had to cut back on personal expenses. I've not been able to finish my home in the timeframe that I wanted to. I've had to cut my own belt very tight just to be able to, you know, make my obligations the best I can. What I'm seeing with this is we're going to the ratepayers and we're saying, okay, this, this is, we've asked you to cut back. You've cut back. You've cut back more than we asked. We're grateful for it, but we still have our bills. And, but we needed that money from you using the water, so we're going to charge you anyway. We need to see something from the board, the staff, and the district as a whole where you're doing something. We saw recently where the town went through some hard times. And you know that I, I'm not the best friend of the town. And believe it or not, Woody and I are sitting there having a sociable conversation in the, in the back here. But they did something right. They took their staff, they cut them from 40 to 32 hours. People took pay cuts. They, they tightened their belts before they went to the people. And I think, I think that this board, for the next three to six months, when you're doing this rate study, and I don't know what the outcome of the rate study is or what position I'm going to take on it. But in this time, I think it's very important for the district to take, and maybe, maybe, maybe you go back to 32 hours a week on, on nonessential staff. Maybe you close your doors on Friday. But you need to do something, cutting them, maybe, maybe the board gives away their healthcare. But maybe you can't do that because maybe you're under contract. I don't know. But the board and the district, before you do any rate increase, needs to do a substantial cut in their operating expenses, nonessential services, and pray to God that the drought, you know, doesn't last 20 years where it hits us. But, but the public needs to see something from that side of the table where you're doing something to eat part of this. And I'm not blaming you for it happening. But if we've got to pay more, I think it's got to go across the board. And I know you're going to have to deal with the unions, you're going to have to deal. But just to take and do across the board 10% hit as an emergency action of a vote of five people, I think it goes against 218. And it, it raises all kinds of red flags in my head. I do support when a pipeline capacity size is increased, that capacity fees are used for that. Because if you remember back a few years when I came before this board, you had a bunch of money sitting in the capacities account and it wasn't being spent. And I think that's a viable use for it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public participation? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Mary Essela. I just wanted to speak to the $10 across the board. We have some tenants in a unit that didn't even use two units of water over the summer. The tenant came to me and said, how are we doing? How are we doing? And now we're going to get, I mean, our bill was $27 or whatever. And now we're going to get $10 more per month because they're trying to conserve. And I just think that there are all these people out there who are neighbors, who just pour the water on their lawns or, you know, the water's running down the street. And we're going to pay the same and it's going to be darn near 50%, 45% of our bill. And for them, it's just a pittance and it's not even going to make a dent for them. They're not going to care. $10 is nothing. But for those people who are trying to conserve, for those people who have done their best to conserve, that's a big hit. $120 a year for some people who maybe can't afford that. So that's the comment I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mary.
Maybe she could explain the timeframe of this. Maybe he proves to do that.
Well, okay, we'll do a little clarification and then ask, I'll continue with the public participation. Kevin or George, would you like to explain the way that this is written as an interim?
The proposal is an interim step. So this would expire upon the acceptance of a new rate change program by the board. So it'd stop then or at any board vote. Or it would stop when we've recouped the negative revenue. So if we didn't get through a rate change, when we recouped that revenue that we've identified in here, then it would stop.
Okay, Woody?
Steve Colleton, Paradise resident, also on the town council. I'll try to keep my composure. To accuse me, a ratepayer, of saving money, and now I need to give it back to you, I think is ludicrous and insulting. Like somebody else said, we use less water, we paid for what we used. I think if you have a problem because you've lost, you have a couple of mixed up numbers. Gee, we lost based on our estimates because we're really prudent at doing budgets. We, so we estimated $300,000 less in revenue. And so gee, in the last six months, we lost another $300,000. Oh, but golly, we've really lost $600,000 or $800,000. Okay, I think I can follow that train of thought and figure it out. But the deal is, you lost that because the state did a mandate. You didn't lose it because of any, any of the citizens or any of the ratepayers in your district of anything we did, you know? And I understand fixed costs. We at the town have fixed costs. And we did a lot of things before we ever went to the ratepayers and asked for a tax increase or any kind of an increase. We did a lot of things that we had to do. We cut internally. We deferred maintenance. We did a lot of stuff. You've got winter coming and you're going to have some layoffs. You're going to have some cost savings that I don't know if they're in this projection. My biggest objection to this is like this, if this kind of a motion was brought to the town council, I would tear holes in it. I would question every bit of ambiguity. Part of my job as an elected official is to oversee the staffs and the reports that I'm given and to scrutinize that on behalf of the public, we, the ratepayers, and your behalf. Okay, so when they talk about, George just mentioned, this thing will expire if and when Prop 218 is satisfied, which the voters said every public agency must go through that rigmarole and those hoops. I'm on your side on this one. It's a pain and you know what. But, but that's what the voters said, so that's what we have to do. Okay, that's going to take some time. And let's say that the voters 50% plus one show up and say, no, we don't want that new rate structure. That's being, you know, oh, it's not a rate increase. It's a new rate structure and some of you will pay less and some will pay more and it's going to be more fair. I've heard that whole thing. That's great, and maybe that's true. But the thing is, if and when that passes, whenever that is, then this would go away. You're looking for $800,000. If this report is correct and you assess me $10 a month, every month, on my meter and everybody else in this district, you'll raise in eight months more than $800,000. So I, if you're going to pass this, which it sounds to me, when Mr. Duncan, you make statements like you make before we have public comment, it sounds to me your mind's already made up. But if you're going to pass this, then what you ought to consider is adding a sunset clause. We at the town, when we put any kind of a taxing on, because we understand the public we serve. We said, you know what, the only way you'll buy this, if I give you a date certain it's going to end. So if you want to say that it's going to be either or, okay, in eight months, this will go away or when the new rate structure is passed. That's a little bit more palatable being. Now, I'm on a fixed income. I didn't get my social security thing because of some other crazy stuff. Again, that other people do, not you guys or us. And I understand the state caused this problem. You know, I understand there's problems like that. But then you know what? Go to the state and say, give me some emergency funds. You know, they do it for fires and other things, so go there and get that. And, and I don't know, that's just what I feel. I mean, if you're going to do this, put in some language that's going to make it a little more palatable, at least to me as a ratepayer. You know, my daughter just is on social security. She gets $800 a month, time she pays rent, buys food and pays for her medicine. This is another 10 bucks. That's over a 30% increase to my bill. I paid $24.50 or $27, whatever it is, and now it's another 10. That's $37, no matter how much water I use. So anyway, if you're going to do it, at least put some things in there that are going to assure us, the ratepayers, that, you know, you're using common sense and it's not just some arbitrary, open-ended thing, oh, yeah. There's no even guarantee here it'll ever go away. Because if you take those new numbers and you do a projection out and plug in the losses of the drought years and all that, oh gee, we really underestimated that the last time, even though like Ward said, there's, this is historical that we have droughts, you know, '97 and other times. Then, you know, you say, oh, we better, we better put in more. We better make that rate so that we can anticipate all of this if it ever happened again. And so I don't know if that's what you're going to do, but right now, the way this is written, I wouldn't trust it.
I've not made up my mind how I'm going to go.
Thank you.
Well, I just was trying to explain it to you, how I felt about it, but that doesn't mean.
Okay, thank you, Woody. Any other public would like to come, well, we're got, one's already walking. I'll, I'll get to you next, sir.
I, Jim, I introduced myself before. I have several questions about this surcharge. The number of $10 per meter, I don't know, how, how that number was determined? Was it arbitrarily or they decided this is a good round number? Why 10, why not 5, why not 15? What, how did that number come about? These numbers and this proposal is coming essentially out of the blue without any real background for us to judge the, you know, the necessity here. I understand infrastructure. I understand the fixed infrastructure problems, issues and everything like that. But I also understand that there are ways for the PID to cut some of their operating expenses. They can cut back on overtime, especially discretionary overtime. They can defer projects. They can, there's, there's a list of things that they can do. They can reduce working hours. They can cut back on spending. They can defer purchasing items that may not need for another year or two. Things that are upgraded that may still be serviceable for another year or two. There's a lot of things that we would like to see as ratepayers that the PID would have to show us that you're part of the solution and that's part of the problem. Show us that you're willing to cut back. Show us that you're willing to, to take a shot like we are and have been. And if we can go, we can work with you on that. But if you sit up here essentially and say, well, we're not going to cut our spending, but we're going to increase your rates, I don't think you're going to find too much of a sympathetic audience. In any case, the, on the, the thing that was on the Paradise Irrigation District on the website, which I printed out, and it was the emergency drought surcharge capacity fee, which we had up on the board there. Total revenue loss here, it shows on that one, $672,000, $688 for a period of two, well, over two years. Well, I was on the rate establishment committee back in 2011. And on the Paradise Irrigation District letterhead, I have a memo here. Change the monthly billing, change the definition of multifamily rate, et cetera, et cetera. Paradise Irrigation District. On the first page, in the second paragraph, it says, this, we're talking about the budget and looking at the rates. It says, "After 2014, the district will have retired a large debt, freeing up approximately $640,000 annually. The goal of this rate adjustment is to increase revenue to ensure enough funds are collected for the district's operational needs and maintain pipeline replacement efforts with district employees through 2014. Additional capital projects will be funded by reserve funds and funds dedicated to capital projects. The increase in cash after 2014 will be used to replenish reserves and reduce the impacts of future rate increases." This is your own document in 2011. What happened to the $640,000 that was retired debt that we were supposed to collect annually for, from 2014? That there, just one year. That there, just one year, would offset that total revenue loss of $672,688 that's on your paper right here, and leave us a total net loss of only $30,000. How come? What happened to the $640,000 that was supposed to be surplus funds? How come it's not using to cover this? That's my question, that's what I came up with. I don't think that this arbitrarily surcharge is a wise move. I think that it needs to be, if it's done, it needs to be done with the input of the people. It doesn't need to be done arbitrarily by some members of the board, and I perceive it myself as an end run around Prop 218. And that's what I, that's the way I see it. You don't want to go through the process, so you found another mechanism to raise revenue, and you don't want to cut expenses, you just want to raise the revenue and you want to pass it on to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there was a couple themes that maybe I can provide some clarification.
All right.
Just so everyone's aware, we have employees represented by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. They are a union shop. We've had a negotiated agreement with them, so as far as arbitrarily cutting hours, that's not something that can be done and be done very easily. When you have instances of unions with towns and unions with school districts where they have fixed sets of revenue streams, the battles can be kind of laid out that way. But when a district like ours that has the ability to generate revenue has to deal with unions and the ramifications of not coming to terms, we have to face state agencies, and oftentimes, they're going to look and say, well, you haven't raised rates in two years, you're just punishing your employees. So, as far as layoffs, as far as cutting hours, it's not a real option for us with a contract that we have. We have no discretionary overtime, that's not something that happens here. Our overtime is for emergencies, callouts, et cetera, so that's not an option. And we've been deferring capital expenses for a couple of years. So, we've been in, you know, if you've been at the meetings regularly and the budget meetings, those things have happened, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
One more thing, too.
Clarification of the $647,000 Jim spoke of.
Yeah, that was, that's a 2011 document, so I can't speak to it. It possibly could have been in the recommendation document, which was 12%, 4%, 4% increase, and that's not what the board adopted. They adopted a...
It was specifically stated in that, that the revenue, that the debt retirement would be in 2014, and that the money that was going to that debt, $640,000, would be free for the department to use to build up the reserve and reduce cost of living rate increase. It says so right in the document.
I'm not going to debate you on it. You're more than welcome to set up an appointment, I'll sit down with you, Kevin will, we can walk you through that, but I'm not going to argue with you.
When did the drought start?
2012.
2012. The other thing that...
After that document.
That everyone should be aware of, in our contracts with the employees, the last time we negotiated, their cost of living is tied to social security. So when you, when the public gets 0% come January, so does the employees. You should be clear of that.
You two, too.
And we're on the same schedule, too.
We're on the same what? The manager and the treasurer are on the same deal. So we've been working hard to do.
We had another speaker.
Hi, my name's Seth Robert. I've lived here my whole life. It was pretty good when I was a teenager. If you ran up to the reservoir and everything was full, everything was going to be good. Those were the good old days. I guess they're gone. I guess I'm going to echo a little bit about what's been said up here, is just after two years of the people, you know, doing what they were supposed to do, it just feels like, you know, we're getting, our rates are going to go up, and that's a bad thing. You know, I like this building, I like the nice yard out there, but over the last couple of years, that's something that's, I'm sure, been a big expense from where we moved from, and I know it's a convenience. But that was an expense that was put out, probably with the hopes that this drought would go away, and people would use water, and we'd be able to fund it. But that didn't happen. Now, one of the things that's been mentioned up here is, I know that I, in the last two years, have gone from an acre and a third to about four acres. So I've lost fruit trees, and I've lost yard, and I chose to just not do yard. So I had loss. So again, with all that, being congratulated for doing such a good job in the last two years, and losing fruit trees, and thinking about replanting them, and living here my whole life, wanting to kind of have the lifestyle of having a green lawn, not flooding it, but having a green lawn, I see that all slipping away. And so, again, I see raises, I see, you know, nice buildings and a lot of money going out, but I'm going to have to recoup, and I'm going to have to put money out. I've already made the cut because I've lost property. So I'm just kind of wondering where that's going to go, and at the future of what's mentioned in January, you know, about the proposed, we'll say proposed, fee increase. You know, to have my meter go from 45 to 93, that's over double. Now, I know this is proposed, and I know maybe this isn't the right time to talk about this, I was kind of confused on when and what to talk about, but that scares the life out of me. It's like, do I call the rock yard and have them just deliver, you know, 20, 30 tons of rock, and just put my yard in rock? That's not paradise to me, that's not why I've lived here my whole life. So these are just some of my concerns. My other concern is that when you would send out each individual in Paradise a proposed, a proposal, and then if you care about it, you'll vote. If you don't, and you throw it away, we count it as a yes vote. That's what I've heard. Well, then it makes me wonder, next November, when the Democrats and Republican presidential candidates go, you know, those people that don't vote, where do their yes votes go? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. And I just, I guess I want things that make sense to me. You know, why are we raising? You know, why do we count yes votes, if that's the way it goes, when someone decided not to vote? So that's all I have to say, and, you know, nothing malicious, but I'll do anything I can to stop water from going up in this town.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, all. My name is Dave Raymond. I'm a retired state employee, moved up here in 2000, and we're now 16 years in our residence. When we bought our house, it was a park. We have approximately 75 azalea bushes, rhododendrons on the property, and we're losing them daily. Excuse me? Yeah, because of the cutbacks. Now, two years ago, I hired a landscaper, and he evaluated our yard, and he said, well, you have PVC system that should come out, it's not efficient, and you've got water leaks on a rolling basis, month to month. So we decided to invest $5,000 in ripping out the entire system and replacing it with above-the-ground emitter system. We took the sprinkler heads and everything out. After spending that $5,000, we went two years, and we saw a reduction in the amount of water. In fact, I even asked Doug Fletcher about the emitter system, how efficient it was over what we had before. And we found that after we received the letter from the PID telling us we needed to make a mandatory reduction as a top-tier user of 50%, it really puzzled me. So I came here to the PID, and I asked if there was somebody available to walk the property with me to tell me where I could become more efficient, and I was told no one was available to do that. That I walked out of here with smoke coming out of my ears, I'll tell you. So this past spring, to comply with the new 50% reduction, I spoke to another landscaper whose mother lived next door to me, and he agreed. I hired him at $1,500 to come in and change the emitter system again to where we are now. I also joined Aquahawk so I could watch my consumption monthly. We had a target of $59 a month, that was going to be my ceiling, and we've been coming in the last couple of months at about $39. Now I get a letter from the PID telling me they're going to surcharge me, and this gentleman then tells me that he's taking money back, that we already invested in our property. I just don't understand your logic, I really don't. I was in state service for 20 years. I worked in public safety, and I'm appalled at the way you run this operation here. It is very inefficient, I see a bit of good old boyism in this town the way it is. And I have a disabled wife, we're on a fixed income, and you just want to go, ka-ching, 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 give us more money, and we'll do what we can, and you'll hear about it with no sunset on any of this. And I'm sorry to be so upset about it, but I think this is a bit ridiculous.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this at this time? You're up to bat.
My name's Josh Worthington. I live about a block over. I've actually heard quite a few things here that I hadn't thought about, and I am kind of curious about. One is, why did they get bonuses? What did they do to earn that bonus? If we're in an emergency, I guess we screwed up. Is this like the banking system that everybody's been complaining about with the mortgage, where the banks got all kinds of bailed out, and then they all got bonuses, and so, that sounds a little bit fishy, but there's probably an answer to that. The other is, I do like the idea of a sunset. When's this going to expire? I mean, honestly, $10, big deal, I got it, I can pay for it, but I might not be able to next year, and I bet a lot of these senior citizens here are on a fixed income. My grandma's on a fixed income, you know, she gives her last dime to her, you know, son, that's anyways. I see a lot of things that I don't approve of. Another thing is, is I'm listening to you guys talk about checks and things being written out, rental guys, these signs telling us that they're going to be closed from 7 till 7 on Saturday and Sunday, and all these, imagine those are pretty expensive. So then I live, you know, I live here on North Libby, and I work down here on Pearson, so I see both ends of this thing. I drive by all last week, and I see PID trucks, guys, tractors, all at this house right here that's been, I don't remember anybody living in that house for a long time, and I'm thinking, okay, so I imagine they're trying to recoup some money by renting it out, but is this a good time to put out? I mean, how much do they cost to invest into that house, and how much are you getting in return on investment? So maybe we could have waited until after the drought, and, you know, a few other things. And also, I remember 2011, I think this was a AAA building, so after the drought, did we buy this place? Did we build that? Was that, was that good planning? Good budgeting? Was that bonus material?
Way before the drought.
Was it? This right here?
2010.
The building's right here?
This.
Okay, this.
And that.
That was built before the drought?
Yeah.
I thought that was done about two years ago.
Hitted the money, we had purchased the property.
Okay, well then maybe I'm incorrect, it just seems, you know, but what are we doing with this house here? And so, my other, my other question would be is, why do we have pipe layers and waterworks guys doing construction work, and nobody was doing anything down here on Pearson during those days? But then, again, your budget's paying to have these signs running, so it just doesn't make sense. It seems like you're wasting here, and it's like, follow the peanut under the walnut shell. So, I don't think this increase is necessarily fair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we move on, we're going to do a little clarification here. First of all, people keep saying that there's no sunset clause in this particular idea and motion that we've put forth. George, would you reiterate again, the sunset clauses, I think there were three?
Yeah. It would expire when a new rate change happened and approved by the board.
And they've been working on that for the last, what, three months?
Three or four months, yep. It's in process.
We expect that to be...
Effective, hopefully February 1st, possibly January 1st. Got to get it right. So that's one. The other option is when we've recouped the money, so there's a number up there, and when that number goes away, then it would end by your motion.
And that's in whatever number of months it would take?
Yeah. It depends on what the board adopted.
If we adopt that program at $10 a meter, that saves the district about $100,000 a month.
Yep.
And at the numbers being, what is it, $650,000? That's six and a half months at the outside.
So then you put that in?
And then...
It is.
It's not in the motion.
We haven't made a motion, Woody.
One, two, three.
Let us do our business. We haven't made a motion.
And the third option is whenever the board wants to end it.
That was the third option, that's not a sunset clause.
It's just recommended, it doesn't mean that.
The other thing that I wanted, the other thing that I wanted to clarify is that people with just the briefest glimpse of what our workers are doing jump to the strangest conclusions. And it's not any fault of yours, it's not any fault of anyone's, but if a person would come in and ask the district, why do you have a crew working over here on this house? The district would say, because the roof is leaky, the winter rains are coming. We are either going to have damage to the home if we don't get it repaired, and cost us much more money to do the interior repairs than to take our crew that we can and use that labor that we're already spending for them being here, and maybe we're not going to place a pipe down some road over here for another month, but...
I wasn't what I was saying, I was saying, Pearson Road Project is being delayed.
Okay, then let's, is Pearson Road Project being delayed?
There is no one diverted from that project to put a roof on a house.
I didn't see anybody that day.
Well, it had nothing to do with whether there was a roof going on.
There's days when the city, there's days when the town are down there, there's...
Oh, it's Friday.
You know, you kind of think that we just willy-nilly go around making decisions, or the staff does, and it's, decisions are made.
The sunset thing, the longer that I'm asking for, after you make a decision, you get a date. They're right there in the...
They're purpose re-yes.
All right, we're not going to be, we're going to go to the lady, we aren't opening for discussion back and forth between public members. If you've already spoken your time on the microphone, then we aren't.
My name is Cynthia Harvey. Someone and I just want to add something to all the other folks. Number one, I would like to tell all of you, your billing staff and the folks that work in your office are fantastic. They're lovely, I mean, they're very helpful, they're great people. Now, having said that, I want to give you something else to think about. There will be no social security cost of living raise. Medicare is going up to $159 per month rather than $104, okay? The Medicare deductible is going to, at the base, to 23. Now, for a lot of people, that doesn't, that's not a big deal. There are individuals, and all the medication rates are changing, okay? Covered amounts. For some people, and, you know, that old saying about a little old lady sitting and deciding, does she eat or does she buy medication? Now, there might be a time when you're saying, do I turn, you know, do I drink water, do I, do I use water, or do I get my medicine? I just want you to understand that there's hard times for everyone, and there's a lot of older people here, including me, in this town. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public speakers to this topic?
Yeah, my name's Peter Swady. I'm a resident here, and how many meters are there in Paradise?
10,500 plus or minus.
So then you're going to be raising $10 times 10,500. Okay, I was wondering about that. And why is there a limit to nobody being able to speak twice? Any other board supervisors, planning commissioners? Any other board supervisors, planning commission, people can say, "Talk twice."
These are the procedural rules that we put into effect in order to facilitate this and not get ground into non-movement and be here until midnight, or two or three in the morning.
That's what I figured, but this is kind of an important thing, and as people ask different questions, the guy who spoke for me gets, wants another question.
Well, also, let me, let me advise you of this.
Yeah.
Because you may not recognize it from the rules here.
Right.
We go to the public once, which is what I've done now.
Mm-hmm.
Then it's gonna come back to the board. We're gonna discuss it amongst ourselves, maybe ask for more clarification before, and if we get motions, then we get motions and second it. Then I go back to the public, and I don't, I don't go back to the public for them to rehash their old, same-old statement that says, "I don't, I can't afford it, so I don't want you to do it." We've heard that. I go back to the public to ask them, based upon the information they've heard, at that point, do they have additional questions on some new topic? And then we allow that to happen. We want the public to be involved, and we do it in two stages like that to try and keep some organization and progress to it.
So now you have another meeting where the public can comment again?
No, not another meeting tonight.
The beginning was... After we talk about it, then we come back to the public.
What he's referring to is public participation, which is at the beginning, and you get one, you get one time and...
Yeah.
One time, and that's it.
Well, that's at the beginning.
Yeah.
Here, you get one time, we discuss it, then I go back to the public again for another hit at it after hearing new things that may have come up, and then the directors will hopefully have as much information as they need to make a decision and make a vote.
But I'm still not clear, when do we get the comment again?
Before we pass the vote.
Yeah.
It is?
In ten minutes or fifteen minutes.
Tonight.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other public speakers to this point at this, at this time? Okay, there being none, I will now follow the steps and bring it back to the board. Board members? Opinions, comments, questions for clarification? Anybody want to start on this? We, at this particular point, we do not have a motion.
Hold on, I'm sorry about that.
Sure, go ahead.
Good. I was waiting till after the public comments just to see where you were at, and I appreciate you people being here, and I want you to know that when you elected me, I consider myself working for you. In fact, we have an item in your business that President Hutt put on there, which I think is very good, but that's a whole different thing. I've been monitoring public and private budgets for pushing sixty years now that I've been in a career, and I started monitoring this one when I took over on your behalf when you elected me. Kevin, can you bring up page fifteen out of the budget? Can you able to do that?
I have it on this computer.
Okay, well, don't worry about it. Page fifteen of last year and this year starts out in the calendar year of '09 and '10. At that particular time, PID had ten million dollars of working capital, some of it was fixed and some of it was not fixed, and you could watch it go down. And I got on the board in '12, and I was looking back and forth of what happened, and I, and I actually tried to have this happen. We either needed to do two things. We needed soft spending money, which is one of the ways to do it, well, you could do that, or you could raise your price of doing business, because that's what we were doing, you see? And we decided not to do that, for whatever reason, we could see all this coming up. And if you go down this page fifteen, which is restricted and non-restricted cash, by the time we got to seventeen... Fifteen, I need Peter to look at my glasses, I guess, but anyway, we're basically on restricted funds, and we can talk about that, you know? So, I know, I mentioned it several times, but I know these people were tired of me talking about page fifteen, and it was kinda nice, and I complimented Kevin about it, because the 2014-15 budget was page fifteen, and I have this year's budgets on page fifteen again, and you can see the handwriting on the wall. Now, the reason for a public entity or a private entity to have reserves is so if something comes along, whether it's a pipe blowing up or drought, which Ward was talking about, we've always had, it's bigger, what, is to cover those costs the best that you can. And see, and we spent all of our reserves, we have no reserves now whatsoever, and I get that. On twenty-four, I talked several times, and what I'm trying to do is tell you what I was doing for you, and then what they were trying to do, in my opinion, working with them, is save you money, because we'd had to raise the rates, and we should've actually raised the rates in about twelve, twelve thirteen, that's about the time we should've raised it, about the time I got on the board. Okay. Now, in fourteen, out of interest in making this happen, I put an item in the agenda that submitted to the board of directors at board meetings of September seventeenth, 2014, and a good old farmer-type of style country boy, spinning forks in the road. We can go down the right road or the wrong road. Board responsibility is to take the right road, you're gonna have to decide whether the road we run. We need to really watch our spending, cash flow. We should have our monthly spending broken down into two categories, fixed costs and variable costs. And the variable cost is a board we would've approved, and what I think they thought we were going to do is question Jim on whether he was making the right decision. That wasn't the case at all. When you do this with a public agency and even a private agency, what you're doing is you're getting it out, and all of a sudden, you'll see where you can save some money. And it may be in the screwballist places, you know, because I've seen that happen, and the same thing. There's more on, on here on this thing. Now, go back, Kevin, and we'll be looking at this before, again, page one thirty-eight, iPad, page one thirty-eight in today's agenda. We'll do that, appreciate it.
Our...
So I just wanna use this as an example.
Well, that's fine, I just wanted to ask you to caution you, this sounds more like a political campaign speech.
No, it's not a political campaign, it's talking about what we're doing here, and then I'll tell them.
But what are we doing to, to move forward on this agenda item?
Watch and you'll see.
Okay.
Okay. Kevin puts this out every month, and it's really good, and that's the one that you see up here, and it hasn't broken down. I thought we were going to go broke or out of funds in about two months. And you'll remember when I talked about the checks, a million bucks worth of checks, and our, our salaries is about three-point-five according to our budget, but in here, you've got it at about two-point-five, so it's in there, monthly, about this type of thing. But I just calculated up what's on the budget on here. We have five hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one dollars left, and we've got here, capacity fixed costs, we've got a one-point-two mil, and there's five seventy-one up here in reserve funds. We can't touch that because when we borrowed some money on, I forgot what project it is, it's in here, the loaning agency made us put money in for the last payment, so that's gotta stay there. Can we get into something? I guess we can, Kevin. But anyway, let me finish, and there's a whole bunch of things down here, and Kevin has always done an outstanding job putting that out. We are actually five hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars from last month, when I was over to have that. Now, so we have been monitoring this, and we could've either raised the rates or cut back, and we should've done both, about this type of a thing. But I think John's got the right idea there, and so has Kevin and George. We've got that one-point-two mil, and we fixed pipe, and that's certainly capacity, that's what you were saying, John, right? So I agree with that. But I do not agree with this, and we need the money desperately, you know, on one page of Kevin's report there, you can see where we're at, but now, perhaps comes the push and this type of a thing, so I would not go for that.
I have a, I have a question for you then.
Yes, please do.
Okay. You, you've so eloquently talked about the fact that we should've taken action several years ago.
Well, certainly.
Twelve was prior to us knowing about the, the drought. Twelve was when we didn't know that we had this process recycle water issue that for ten million dollars we're gonna have to spend. So we make the best budgets we can with the true cost that we have, and we ask for enough in revenue from our, from our clientele to cover the cost, and maybe add to reserves if we're building up for something that we know we're gonna be spending. Okay, so you've mentioned that we, that's what we needed to do. That's what we need to do. So really, the solution to this, from what you've just said, is that when we finally get through our, our two eighteen process, we are going to be passing a rate increase to our clients. It's going to happen. It is not up for debate, because if we, we cut back on people, we can lay off a little bit maybe, but we have to have minimal staffing, we have to have people to get out the bills, we have to keep this water running to our clients, there's something... We can do what we can do, but ultimately, the rates are gonna go up, and it's not ultimately, it's they're going up right now. It's not a matter of being fair, it's not a matter of, of this way or that way or how it's done. The bottom line is, if we don't have enough money to come in and pay the bills, our employees are not gonna come to work, we won't be able to open the building, we're not gonna be able to provide water to our clients. That's our job, that's what we're gonna have to do. Everybody comes in here and they talk about this focus, and this, the last lady that came up to speak, the one who, the spring chicken back over there, she made mention of, of the Social Security Medicare payment going up. That went up by fifty percent, from a hundred and four dollars to a hundred and fifty-nine, right?
Right.
Okay. And medicine goes up, the cost of bread at Safeway goes up, the cost of lettuce goes up, gasoline, everything does. Are you out there complaining to your leaders who can, who impact that decision about the Social Security increase? Are you out there talking to Safeway and say, "Well, I'm going to, I'm gonna boycott your store, I'm, I'm gonna go buy my bread at Rayleigh's" or something? No, you're not.
That's what we do.
That's, but you're not complaining to the management and saying, "Do this, do that, do this, do that." And you come in here to complain, and you, you certainly have questions, you have bona fide questions, you, right now, maybe we've satisfied some of them, maybe we haven't. But this, this district does not sit around making cavalier decisions or not making decisions. We, we didn't choose to dive into this process recycle, water, water recycling thing. That is a mandate of us having to clean up our, our water. So we try to make the best decisions we can. You think that it was, it was bad planning when we took our previous year's budget and said, "Okay, we have cut back, our customers have cut back," I don't know, some huge amount last year, the two thousand thirteen year, in two thousand fourteen, they cut back a lot. You did. And so we say, "Okay, well, we aren't gonna see that revenue. How are we going to get by this year? We can't budget for it." So we take those low numbers, and we know what the guideline was from the state, and we know what our, our people are doing, and then you exceeded expectations by any reasonable manner. The state made, made us go to thirty-six percent, when the rest of the state is doing twenty, and you guys did forty-six percent, or fifty percent, or whatever our number is at now. So that is, we lost three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen. This next year, we've already lost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in three, four months, three months or four months. So what are we gonna do? Okay. What Doug is gonna do is, is come your January or your February bill, you're gonna get the rate increase, and guess what? That rate increase is gonna have to recover that money, because we're gonna need to rebuild these reserves.
That's not a guarantee.
It is going to be... That's correct, it's not. That is our, that is our intent, okay? And if we don't, then you'll live with the results. You ask, "Why don't we cut back like the town did?" Okay, let's just deliver waters five days a week, all right? But we won't make you go without water on both Saturday and Sunday, we'll stagger the days. We'll just not deliver water on Wednesdays and Saturdays. You want us to shut, we, we can, we can shut down, we can shut down the customer service in here, and instead of operating it five days a week, we can operate it four days a week. Well, maybe not, I don't know what our, our union contract says, but if we had the ability to do that, is that what we wanna do to our customers? There, no, there's not, just so you know.
We're not management.
But anyhow, I wanted to make those few comments that, you know, you talk about, "No rate increase now, we, we don't wanna have to pay for this, we suffered, we shouldn't have to pay." Well, it cost us so much money to clean the water and deliver it, and we need to have enough income coming in to pay those expenses, and that is where we're at. Right now, we are not having enough income come in to pay for the expenses, and the primary reason for that, even after, you know, we're, we're setting up these big projects, and we know how we're gonna fund them and how we're gonna pay for them in the future, hopefully we'll get grants, but we're at a, we're at a situation where we've got to have the money coming in to pay for the production of water. And if we don't, what's the recourse? Anybody know?
Can I interject a little bit?
Sure.
Now, we have this five hundred, I'm on page one thirty-eight, one thirty-five, one thirty-eight, turn it back up so they can see it. We've got that unrestricted cash, which means we can do anything you want to with it, or we want to with it, and we got a one-point-two, and George and Kevin came up with the idea of this capacity fund, and that would, and how much do we collect monthly normally now from our ten thousand liters?
There's no monthly collect for capacity fees?
It's new people hooking into the system.
No, 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 not for the capacity, for our monthly, see, we've been living on that for parts of, paycheck, basically.
Revenue?
Approximately five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, see, we get about five hundred thousand dollars a month from each rate payer, okay? My water bill this month was, and I've been using PID water since fifty-one down where I live, and was fifty-seven dollars. Normally, I would've been paying pushing a hundred and seventy-five, but I do a lot of irrigating on four-H projects, and I don't, I have these two cast four-H kids down, and this type of thing, you see? So that's where they're talking about, this decrease in the thing. So what we should've got, what we could've done, if, and we, we had to do it, you gotta keep up with your costs of doing business, if we'd have raised the rates a little bit, would we see our reserves going out? At twelve, we would not be in the boat we're at now, because we'd have covered it, we wouldn't have been rolling the dough, but we would do it.
Director Flesher?
Getting back, getting back, just let me finish one thing here. Two, debt service analysis. We owe nine billion four hundred and twenty thousand dollars as of nine thirty fifteen. Now, we are looking at for this water treatment plant, it starts out at seven, and it went to ten, I think you're saying it's looking like more than twelve, right? We're gonna be meeting with the people on twelve mil.
Good number, with engineering.
Yeah, with engineering, twelve mil. And we have a situation down here, we've already got five hundred thousand in the state that's called B Reservoir, and that's gonna be six mil, okay? Well, as soon as we get this stuff built, four or five years, or whatever it is, we're gonna go from a nine-million-dollar debt, that we've had since I've been on the board, we're gonna be at the thirty-million-dollar bracket, you see? So if you think, and we're gonna have to pay that with a rate increase, so we might as well say right up front, instead of just flopping it on you over a weekend, it's gonna be significant, because you're gonna have a thirty to make the system work, you're gonna have a thirty-million-dollar loan to pay for.
I thought it was about twenty.
He's adding it all in.
Well, you got nine million now, and you're gonna get twelve for building the retreatment plant, and the B reservoir's the number six, so you ended up...
Okay, yeah, we're at twenty.
You're looking at thirty million bucks, and it's gotta be paid for, so you're gonna have a significant rate increase.
These aren't things that we can't do.
We can't...
The state is, the state is these...
But we can bring it out here on the table, and you also have, thanks to George, Kevin, and Jim back here, you have the best water that you'll ever find anywhere, I don't care where it's at, because they do an awesome job.
But the thing we're doing in the process thing isn't helping our water, it's so that we don't put stuff into the river that hurts the little fishes, and it costs money to do that.
Did you, thank you, thank you, Dan. Did you have a comment?
So I just wanted to clarify, I don't mean to, to argue with Director Flesher, but in two thousand and twelve, did anybody get a price increase on their water bill? Because I'm pretty sure that's when it went into effect. And then thirteen, there was another... And then '13, there was another 3%. '14, another 3%? Yeah, so, so at 2011, when we were here discussing it, Loretta, you were here a lot, I know a lot, what was your request? Make it the minimal amount of of increase that you possibly can, because we can't afford to spend more money.
I came and saw the out of the senior citizens, the senior chair, and asked if you please remember that they are on, and there's no place they can go to get one of them. Like, you people could just come to us and say, "We'll raise your bill."
Did you request to have the minimal amount of increase at that?
Let's not engage.
Okay, so that was the, so that was the request that was given. So being that there were hard times and the economy was doing bad, people were hurting out there, we did the minimal amount of rate increase that we needed to just float things by. Kevin produced, Jim was at the meeting back there. He saw the graph that said, "Okay, we're here, and then 2014, we're here, or 13, we're here, and 14, we're here, and 15, we're here, and 16, we're in the hole." But that's the rate increase that was proposed, and that was the rate increase that was agreed upon by the board. So it was trying to float the boat as best as possible without putting the impact onto the customer. Now, we didn't anticipate the process water recycle project, we didn't anticipate a drought. We went from the numbers that we had, the historical data that we had, and that's what we used for that, knowing full well that by this year, this time, we were going to have to ask for a rate increase. But we did not expect the numbers and the projects that we have ahead of us. B reservoir was not on the books, I don't think, even as a proposed project for $6 million or whatever it's going to be to repair that. That was not in a state that we needed to look at. Some of our tanks have gone bad over the years, aged a little quicker than we expected. These are all projects that just happen in life, just like when your car is driving down the road and all of a sudden it gets a flat tire, or the radiator bursts, or the water pump goes out. It's not a, you weren't planning on that happening that day, it just happened. So these are all projects that have come before us, required by the state, that we're going to have to address. It's unfortunate that we have to go to the public to ask for that money, but that's just going to be the way that it is, and and you guys are responsible for the 218. That's, that's why it's out there. You have your decisions to make on it. But we're going to propose the best rate structure that we can that covers these projects coming up. But there were rate increases, and they were done in 2012. I'm kind of sad that you keep repeating that we didn't do a rate increase back then when it was requested, that that was the minimal amount that we could get away with. Director Kellaw, Director Duncan, there were a lot of people out in the crowd. We had 45, 50, 60 people, people standing out in the parking lot, and that's all they were requesting, was to keep it as low as possible, as minimal as possible. Then these other projects came in front of us. It's unfortunate, but this is where we sit today. So.
Okay, I'm going to say one more thing, and then I'm going to try to get us back on track. It was about the fact that somebody, somebody thinks that the $10 per meter was some figure pulled out.
Arbitrary number?
An arbitrary value.
An arbitrary value, okay. At the time, when the committee was meeting, it was the committee's recommendation to come up with $10 a meter. One, it's very simple to implement. Number two, it isn't that onerous, it's $10 a month. That's about 33 cents a day. Maybe for some people, it is onerous. But we had, at that time, a $300,000 shortfall. And we thought, "Well, surely, with all the water that people have stopped using in July and August and September, that we should flatten out, and maybe we won't fall back anymore." So when, when we had this meeting, and the meeting was two or three weeks ago, I can't remember, but the decision was thought, "Well, we want to recover 300,000. How long do we think it's going to take us to get a Proposition 218 passed by the community with a rate increase that is responsible, makes sense, tries to cover all ends of the spectrum?" It's the hardest thing to do, you know, just, just coming up with that. And it takes a long time to move along in this process. There's a lot of study that's done to it, not the least being is the law that's involved with it. So the number was, if we can get, recover that $300,000 back a little bit, not really a little bit, a little, 100,000 maybe in November, 100,000 in December, 100,000 in January, we get our rate increase in an operational and start collecting funds in February, then we've gotten past the the exigent situation that we have at this particular time. So that was a thought process. You may not agree with it, but it's not that we didn't think about this and have a plan and a timing, and that's the way it went. We don't, we still do not have a motion. I'd like to go out to the public, but I don't want to go to the public.
I would like to comment, Mr. President.
Certainly.
And then, I'd like to get involved in this a little bit. I'm sorry you all have to sit here so long. I, I can't sit this way, that's why I move around in the chair, move my feet and, and look up and down. I, I'm just not too good at sitting this long. I didn't learn about this thing until Friday. Friday, I got the agenda over the computer, and it didn't say anything about a $10 fee. It just said that there was going to be a fee. And then, when I got the agenda in the mail, Monday, it spelled it out. It's got what you've got in the agenda here. So we got a chance to read it. And I thought, "Well, this is interesting. This is a great deal of notice to be able to do this." Now, the rate committee talked about it evidently for a month or two, I don't know, because it was never shared.
No, we, we talked about it last meeting.
Okay.
Last meeting, we haven't had a meeting since we had our.
Okay, thank you. So I just found out about it, and I thought, "Whoa, the public needs to know about this, and you folks need to come and put your two cents in." And I'm glad you've come and said what you did. Now, what I'm going to say from here on out is my opinion. And make sure you understand, it's an opinion, because I've been told that's the way I have to do it. Now, the $10 per meter, per month surcharge, as far as I'm concerned, is, isn't something we want to do. It doesn't make sense. I, I've been in private business for years, not too successfully at times, but I've certainly had to drink coffee and eat peanuts to have lunch, and know what it is to cut back till you have nothing left. So I understand what you're talking about in your family. $10 is a meal, if you go to any restaurant now, even the cheapest one, even McDonald's, I think you're at $10. So I'm going, this is not the right way for the district to go. The district actually needs to do what some of you have suggested. We need to cut staff. Now, we can't cut staff pay, but we can't touch the union. They're all got an agreement, and I think we should respect the agreement, and we have a good crew, good field staff working. I think the management group, now, the management group is not just George and Kevin, it happens to be the head of the field crew, the assistant head of the field crew, the engineering staff, and so forth. And most of those folks make over 100 grand a year and have gotten pretty good raises. And I don't see any reason for three months, either we have furloughs, or we have cuts in salary, and have it be, since 10 seems to be a nice number, at least 10% cut, or the staff cannot work full-time, like one fellow suggested. You just get to work a couple of weeks and get a few days off and so forth. I think we'd survive and still run the district and have the water supply to all our customers as long as, see, the guys that actually do the work and fix the pipes and make sure the water treatment plant is running are union. You leave them alone, and you'll have the place pretty well running. Jim's shaking a little bit, because he's another management guy back there.
Office is union too.
Huh?
Have you forgotten that there's a union contract with the management staff?
No, there isn't.
There isn't?
Everybody but Kevin and George.
Are you kidding me?
No, they're not, they've never signed up, do they, to pay dues to the union, Kevin?
They're not represented, but they are represented bargaining.
Oh, my gosh.
They're a recognized bargaining, bargaining unit, but they're not union.
But just to clarify, the, the management has a contract with the district.
Okay.
You agree to that contract.
Well.
They do, no, I'm just so you understand, so if you vary from that contract during its term, they have remedies through the state to challenge that, just to be clear.
Well, maybe I'm a little ignorant about some issues, but that's, so now, I'd like to turn to Proposition 218. There's an explanation of it in detail in our agenda. Now, tonight, on my way here, I stopped and had a sandwich, and when I was doing the sandwich business, I read the Proposition 318. And basically, my interpretation of this fee, as it comes under Proposition 218, it's not possible to pass. It shouldn't be passed because we can be sued. Now, this, because the rules are here, and I've got them marked with arrows and throughout, and I said, "This is my opinion, and I'm not an attorney," but it's here. You can read it. A layman, which is what I am, read it, and I went, "Wait a minute. And if you want me to read some of this, I won't, because it'll take too damn much time." But it's there, you can read it for yourself. Now, as far as the district getting by on the, you know, we can take the funds out of the one fee thing we have to plug the hole for a temporary thing without raising rates. That's why I asked before we went into the discussion, can we break this thing in half? In other words, take the $10 fee away, over here, and put the, using the reserve fund that we use for pipes, change that for we can tap into it. That'll give us almost a nine, how much, Kevin, would that give us to work with?
About $800,000 if you want.
How much?
$800,000.
$800,000, and we have 500,000, so that almost carries us for 90 days. And then they can work speedily on Prop 218. Now, I've asked when the Prop 218 comes out, that we sent out a big postcard this time, it could even be illustrated, we do not want a small, minor print postcard, which was done on the last 218. And people saw it, and they thought it was advertising, they threw it in the trash. And they found out, much to their displeasure, when we had the public meeting, that they'd already voted, because if you throw it away, you throw away your vote, and it doesn't count. So nice big postcard by the district when we get around to 318 for whatever money is we think. Now, I've been proposing a wetlands that I'm estimating is 2 to 3 million. I haven't been able to, I've been very busy, working long days, and the fellow I want to get up here is doing the same thing, creating wetlands down at, near Gray Lodge for wildlife. And he does it with earth-moving vehicles, and the wetlands would be made of earth. And we have a place that we got plenty of earth, and we can do it. I know where the area is, I just want to bring him up, have him look at us, and give me some sort of estimate on what it'd cost to move the earth, the rough estimate, and then the rest. Now, if they consider it all seriously, I've been going, pushing water uphill, and I've been thinking, "Well, this is never going to get through the board, but I'm not going to quit pushing the water uphill." So that's something for you to talk about, and I hope to have a report in 30 days. Now, we're supposed to have an engineering report, a special meeting, that starts at 4:00 in the afternoon with ACOM in November.
Are we off topic here, or are we?
No.
Does that have to do with the rate thing tonight?
Yeah, it does. It has to do with Proposition 218.
But we're not doing 218 tonight.
Just tie it in, Bill, tell us.
Okay.
Tell us how.
So we're, we're going to have this meeting, but they're having it in the afternoon till 6:30. It's a so important thing, I think it should be at 6:30 to the evening. One thing, I'm working full days, and I don't want to have to take a day off to come to the meeting, but the other thing, I want you folks to be here when the engineering study is presented. It actually should be a very educational thing for the board and yourselves. So I would recommend that we change the time of the meeting. We certainly have time enough to do that. To go back to tonight's thing, okay, I think the idea that 20 or 10 bucks for meter doesn't wash, it won't pass the test. And the idea of using the other funds to stopgap, yes, but that is only a stopgap. If we're going to continue running, we have to cut. We have to cut expenses. We just don't buy any more pickups. We don't pay for any of the directors or management to go on any trips. We've got to cut all this stuff out. It's all extra. It's not anything we have to have to run the water district. And so we should cut our funds to that. I do not want to be a town of paradise, get hit where we lay off employees, cut services and everything, and we're right on the edge of it. I do not want to be the city of Chico, who has not yet recovered from their high days where they were spending money they didn't have and borrowed and made all sorts of mistakes, and the whole management team left town when they finally figured out what the books were. So I want this place to be financially sound. It is not. I'm sorry, but there's three directors, every time they want some money, we, there's two of us that vote against it most of the time, once in a while Doug joins them, and I'm going, "We've got to stop. We've got to stop spending this kind of money. This is money we don't have to spend." And so I, and I would suggest that all the directors, we get paid $100 a meeting, why don't we take a cut and get 50 bucks? Okay? To show the people in the district we're doing, and we're trying.
I have an idea for you, Bill.
What's that?
Let's have all of the directors give up their health insurance.
Oh, okay.
Put it on the agenda.
Why not?
Put it on, Bill.
No, I'm not going to put anything on the agenda. I'm going to just tell you what I feel, and I thank everybody for coming, I thank you for your opinions. I think you've hit the nail on the head, and now you can talk to those three over there.
Yeah, thanks, Bill, for your, your political speech. We're not back to the public yet. We, are we going to have a motion? I say let's take the easiest motion first, talk about it, dispose of it, and then move into a second half motion, would be a suggestion.
Okay, I move that we use the capacity fee funds to reimburse the district's general fund for capacity increasing pipeline projects that were contracted from Fe, July 1, 2014 to the present date, and to continue funding capacity increasing pipeline projects from the account until further action by the board.
Do we need a dollar amount on there?
No.
Are you taking the $10 they are?
I'll second.
It's not even that.
Okay, it's been.
This is just the capacity.
It's been a motion and seconded. Would you be able to reread that and make sure that?
It's the same thing over here, you just read the, it starts there.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1739.01]
And our ratepayers, like they say, the water are very good at paying their rate bills most of the time. So, without... Using a calculator, that gives us about 8... 1.8...
Okay, yeah.
At like the end of November?
Yeah, by the end of November.
And how much... Excuse me. How much money will we have spent between now and the end of November?
How much money, on average, is about 500,000 to 600,000?
So, it goes up to 8...
Three months.
1.8, down back to 1.2 because we spent 600,000 between now and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we've been doing that for months.
Sure.
We have... The other thing to remind you of is that we also have contracts that we have agreed to with contractors out there that are continuing to work on projects that are not included in that normal operational expense that we see.
Yeah. Maybe so. Or would you put that... Would you put what... Would you put page 144 on... 144. I asked Kevin to do this about four... Several months ago, and he's very good at it. Unless there's some that you haven't got on here, these are all the current contracts that we have with different people. And this is all we have, really, contracts, other than maybe some little ones. But these are the big ones. And you'll notice we go across here. It's amazing what it costs to get, keep our water rights up. And I spent some time up in Redding last week looking at a different rate. It was quite an eye-opener. And the forest plan, and we've done an outstanding job. I compliment Jim and his crew and George on our forest plan. They're really getting it under control. George, you said to me congratulations on that. We've... They've actually harvested millions of pounds of fodder that if it ever got going, got to be a quile. And you go on down through this, you can read it. And here's AECOM Process Water Project. We started out with $138,000, and...
A million.
Now, we've paid them 378. We still owe 659, but they're not done yet. And then, the grant writer that Bill was talking about... And I've worked with a lot of grant writers. I've been working with one right now down at Orgo. And we contracted for 25,000. Just isn't the grants she's confined. She's left it with others there.
I think your public is getting...
She worked on some.
They can see it on the wall. See where we're at? So, you have nothing to do with that $10 fee in there?
Right.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other comments from... Questions from staff? Okay. We're going to go now back to the second part of our public participation. And as I said, I'm only going to ask that you...
Just talk about the motion.
Yeah. It is... Especially at this time because if we make another motion on the $10 increase, I will come back to public again. So, the motion about us moving money from one fund into our general fund is really what we're discussing here. And, Ward?
Thank you, Director Hunt. Yes, I think I can cover three things briefly that I did not say at my first chance. Number one, I want to agree and continue to compliment PID because we do make the greatest water. It takes a lot of effort. We don't have a lot of it. So what we do make, we have to do it as best we can. And we do have some of the best water in Northern California. I'd also like to say I have a lot of experience with a company called California Water Service Company. I did consulting with them for over four years, and I've been a stockholder and attended stockholder meetings. I know several of their managers. If PID was for sale and Cow Water bought them, first thing they would do, raise the rates.
A lot.
That's just the way they operate. They've done it with several other companies. They've done it in Arizona, Hawaii, Washington State, and other parts of California. Lastly, though, I think if Director Fletcher used to pay $175 for water and now pays 60, maybe his surcharge for this should be $28. Mine should be a dollar, and my next-door neighbor should be a dollar because we're super savers. In those three meters, you'd still get your 30 bucks.
Thank you.
I'm saving 80%, though, for 13.
Yes, John?
Board, I support the using the capacity fees 100% because there's a direct correlation between the size of the pipe and the capacity that you can transport. I just wanted to make sure that there's something that says this is not a loan that has to be paid out of the general fund. This is a dispersal from the money that's being held in the capacity account to the general fund for reimbursement, and it's not a loan. And I think you're doing the right thing on this part in doing it this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lauren?
Lauren Harvey? First, I'd like to say, Mr. Barber, I'm sorry I broke out into laughter. That was very rude of me, and I want to publicly apologize. I'm sorry I did that. And in falling with that, I'd just like to say that you're one of the ones that negotiates with the union for their contracts. So that's how come it caught me off-guard, and I started laughing, although I shouldn't have. A man of my age should be able to hold it back. But you're the one who... You're part of the problem for negotiating the rates for the union workers. So when you said we got union contracts, and we can't change them any, remember, you're part of the negotiating process for that part. Now, the other thing is, is I'd like to remind the board that this discussion tonight sounds a lot like Bell, California. If you think about it, what are we doing? We're spending what we ain't got. We've spent it like drunken... Well, we can't say Indians no more because that'd be prejudiced. So, we're spending it like drunken folks, citizens. And the other thing that I made note of here is don't forget the board, at least three on the left-hand side, give bonuses out in this year alone to George Barber and Kevin, knowing full well this thing was coming. So you've spent money knowing that you were running out of money via giving away bonuses. So the only thing I'd like to say is, is Sep, you work for Miller Glass. Do you suppose they'd give away bonuses if they were losing money? They were going down in revenue?
Every year.
And you work for yourself, Mr. Duncan, in the accounting business. And do you suppose you'd build a new building if you didn't have as many customers? And, Mr. Hunt, you're in the loan business. Do you suppose that you'd be running that business down there if you were running negative? I made comment a few months ago that you put out a little tear-off sheet like they do for garage sales out in front of your place to save money. And I believe you did that because the thing is, you three... Well, Mr. Kellogg's got a seed business here in town. But the thing is, you're all in competition with other people. There's other accountants. There's other glass shops. I've moved glass shops. There... I obviously got an accountant other than you, and I don't need a loan, so... But so, what I'd like to say is, I'd like to say you guys can do what you want, even though you were elected by the public. And I'd like the public to please be reminded, vote with your feet if you don't like what happens here. You do not have to patronize folks that vote like you don't think. If you think like them, then please do business with them. But otherwise, I would suggest maybe you do business with a different accountant, a different loan agency, and a different glass company. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Before I go to the next public speaker, because this has happened twice now, maybe three times, Lauren, you really need to go up there and see what those little yellow hanging-down things are on my sign.
They're not there no more.
Before... That's right. I think maybe you've ripped them off, but I'm not real sure. And they were never this cheap supermarket tear-off, take a name and phone number. And if you would have ever bothered to look before you started yapping, you would have known that. I had a person... The sign there, they cut through the garden area. And I saw him, an elderly man do this. He jammed his head into the edge of my sign. That's an aluminum sign. It cut him. And even though he wasn't on the sidewalk, he wasn't in a walking path. He was cutting through the bushes. So, just as a quick fix, I got a bright piece of yellow paper, cut it up so it would wave in the wind, and taped it on the edge. And since then, nobody smacked into the sign.
Do you allow people in the audience...
So, I don't mind cutting expenses and being as frugal as I can in my business. But that is a misnomer, and it's an insult. I think that Lauren Harvey just wants to keep bringing up...
Right. There's this thing called a...
We're going to go back to public comments now.
My name's Josh for the third time.
Again.
I'd say yay on the capacity fee. And the only other thing... You guys are going to do what you're going to do. I got to get out of here. I'm a single parent, and I got a three-year-old that I should have been home to. If you do decide to do this, the only thought that I... Suggestion I would have is for the low-income seniors, maybe there's a way that they can be exempted, and other people can... I mean, I can afford to pay another $10, you know, if she can't afford to. So, in the light... In the case of... That's not what I'm saying is that's a recommended suggestion of maybe people that qualify. I got to go. Have a good night.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks for showing up.
Next public speaker. Would somebody like to come up and provide us with any other input?
Yes, yes. Can I talk now?
Yes, you may.
Different topic, you can.
No, no. I want to talk. You want to speak?
I've got the hammer right here.
What I wanted to tell you last time when you wouldn't let me talk is my backflow valve didn't work this year. They said, "Got to let it run itself. Got to fix that backflow." And so, I called the guy to come and fix it.
Let me ask you a question, please. Are you going to be talking about this topic? About us using...
When you talked about your flowering sign, was it about this topic?
It was response. Are you going to talk about this topic? Because if you're not...
Yes, I am.
Then get to it, okay?
No, sir, you're very rude.
Yes, I know I am.
Well, I...
So, get to the point.
Anyway, since you wouldn't let me speak to this before, I would like to finish my statement now. I called the man to fix my backflow valve, and he said that he has had a lot of calls this year on failing backflows, and it's... And they're all full of dirt. Is there something we're doing wrong that's filling these up with dirt? I don't know the answer to that. But I know we all have to pay to get them fixed. Help.
That's a good question.
That's not even on topic. Thank you very much, Loretta.
Call in George and ask him during the office.
Now then, I think you've got some smart, smart people here tonight, and you need to listen to them. And I listened to Doug talk about how ever since he's gone to the sport, he's been telling you, "You're losing money. You're going to have to..." But you voted for all these bonuses, new pickups, trips to the desert, to conventions.
And is that your opinion on whether we should transfer this money or not?
And so...
You're not going to talk about the topic at hand, are you?
That there was no money. Why did you vote for those things? See, we...
Just a mystery, isn't it, Loretta?
It is. How much did it cost you to move these desks from one side of the room to the other side? Did I help put up my signs?
Good.
You're a rude man.
That's making more...
You talk and bore these people, but you don't want anyone else to speak.
Thank you, Loretta, for your comments. Off-topic, as I suspected. Does anybody else like to speak about the topic we have on the agenda right now? Then not, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion amongst the board? Questions, comments before we vote?
I have, as President. As I understand this, the motion that Director Duncan put out, we went over the amount of money that we would have that I calculated out here real quick. It was $1,850,000 by the 1st of November. Thereabouts, 1.8 with the new coming in. So, we would not have any rate increases. Somebody was asking that at this point in time. There would be no rate increases. But as the minute or the second that we get Prop 218 going, there will be some rate increases. It could be significant for a lot of reasons, you know? An additional $15 million worth of debt, and enough money to keep the place afloat. Now, George said, and I think he's done an outstanding job of it, we're going to have a workshop on that, right, George?
Yep.
So why don't you... Could you mention that to these people that we're doing? And it's a public workshop.
Yeah. The process is the... I'll go back to committee once more with my cost of service report. Then we'll have a workshop with the board. That'll be no action, question, and answer. Then you have a board meeting where they propose... Adopt proposed rates. Then there's a notice sent out to all the property owners in the district, 45-day time period. Then the board will have a public hearing, and then that's the time they would consider adopting rates and evaluate any protests.
Okay. The board meeting that you were talking about, first of all, because the rest of us, except for the rate people, don't know what's going on. That would be over to the public, too.
Yes.
So, for our sake, as far as the board members is concerned, as speaking as one, my opinion, and I think they agree with me, we need your input. So, when you see an advertisement that the board is going to be meeting and discussing 218 situations, and you know it's going to be significant, please find time to come because your opinion really is key. I really believe that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Bill?
You've made yourself a lot of new rope tonight, by the way you've conducted this meeting.
Are you going to be talking about this on topic?
I'm making my comment, and you better not.
You can do it in director comments.
And you better not interrupt me.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. You've made a lot of new rope for yourself tonight.
I have not, Bill, but go ahead.
Yep. And you should be apologizing to some of the people in the public. But I'm trying to help you out.
Oh, I can see that, Bill. Oh, I can see that, Bill.
But I think that I shouldn't even attempt it, because it doesn't, you're sitting there, very plump and satisfied with yourself with your performance, which has been very poor.
Worthy comment, Bill. Like a roll call vote on this, please?
Uh, Vice President Corle?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Pleschler?
Yes.
Director Calhoun?
Yes.
President Hunt?
No. Would like to move on. It passes four, one. Would like to move on. Are we going to entertain any other half motions on this topic? In regard to the emergency drought surcharge and capacity fees, or the emergency drought surcharge that we had?
I know I made up my mind before the meeting, but I don't wanna make a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion so we can move this perhaps quickly to a vote, perhaps not quickly. I move to adopt a ten dollar per meter per month surcharge, beginning with the first billing cycle in November and continuing until a new rate structure is in effect. Or the consumption revenue deficit since January two four, 2014, as identified, please. Uh, July, 2014, you're right, has been recovered. Uh, and just identify that amount at this point. So that means that if we go in the hole anymore, we aren't going to be adding it on. Because by then, we can take care of it with the Prop 218.
Six seventy-two, six eighty-eight.
Excuse me?
Six seventy-two, six eighty-eight.
Okay, so my, my motion is that we have that figure specified as six hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars. So that's the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, no-
Just a second, so we can get a vote.
Okay, so I'll open it up for discussion first amongst- Do we need anything else amongst staff? Okay, anything else amongst the board? Go ahead.
My opinion, and that's all from what I read, it doesn't hold water. It's, three eighteen covers it. We really can't do this, so-
Two eighteen.
Oh, two eighteen, I'm sorry. It's, you know, sometimes, I drank too much tea, Larry.
Too much tea?
Yeah, too much.
I'm drinking too much as water.
That's my comment.
I'll make a comment, then. Call Lauren if you'd like. I think what this might do is, help us do, according to my September seventeenth, fourteenth, it might help us get on the right road. If we have been on the wrong road, figure this out, though, because necessity makes that happen. And this 218 proposition, I've never been through it, I'm looking forward to it. We hope, like I just mentioned, that you people would come and be part of it. And there, we need to move on it, get it going quickly as possible. That's it.
Okay, well, since we're kinda moving down the desks here, I'll make a comment. My comment is, it's pretty simple. You can pay for it now, or you can pay for it later. But there's, it's irrefutable that it's gonna have to be paid for. Any other things here before we-
No, I, I want, I have four meters in this district. And I'm a super saver. I use two units a month. And I have an acre and a half on one of my properties. So you know a lot of my stuff has died, just like other people's. But I, I started this back in 2014. And I lost a lot of it, plants and everything. And, uh, so I'm not, I haven't saved any money by cutting back, because I cut back long before it. And I was just trying to tell you people that you have saved some money because you've been good and cut back and you've made it so we didn't run out of water. And that's very, 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 I, it's very complimentary. And like my wife says, they tell you to cut back on energy for PG&E and as soon as you do, they raise the rates. Because they've gotta get the same amount of money. This is how all utility companies work. And as far as the bonus that we gave Kevin and George, it was less than two percent and they didn't get a raise that year. So I come, so how many of you people didn't get two percent last year? And so to say that, what did we get with social security? Wasn't it 1.7?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it was 1.7 last year. Now, like you said, though, nobody's gonna get any raises. And also, I wanna inject, George was not the negotiator with the union last year.
I forgot.
So you were wrong.
I, yeah.
We had an attorney doing it. So anyway, and, uh, and as far, and it really irks me because George and Kevin have saved us, everyone says it's their job. But they've saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars by being good managers and a good treasurer. And so therefore, I, I think we need them and without them, we'd be in deep trouble.
Any other comments here before we go to the public?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm returning to the public then, and Lauren, I'll have you come up.
He's gonna beat you.
Oh, I guess Woody's his first one.
I beat him, I beat him. He's gonna, he's gonna ask everybody to resign. Steve Cullidge, once again. You know, the only thing I wanna point out is that from all of these sunset arbitrary dates, like when this rate increase or new rate structure goes through, you know, Mr. Hunt speaks as though that's a given. Prop 218 that the voters passed means that if fifty percent plus one of us rate payers say no, you're not gonna get it. So that's not a given. And he keeps speaking of it as it's an absolute and it's a given. And that's okay if that's his belief. But I mean, and it probably will happen. I understand, you know, the economy of scale and economics and all, to where you gotta raise rates and that's gonna happen at some point. But the action you just took with this reserve money and moving around, it kinda makes you okay. You still have some reserves. And it doesn't dump all this stuff on us going into the holiday season. You know, if you do do it, and we all gotta pay that extra ten bucks, then according to his numbers, by February, or you're saying, oh, January, February, we're gonna have this new rate structure, this thing will end. In the meantime, that's ten dollars I don't have in December to buy Christmas gifts. That's ten dollars I don't have for a turkey dinner at Thanksgiving. And so, you know, that's a thirty percent plus increase to my water bill. So, I, I just think it's arrogant when you talk about it. You just assume that, that everybody's not gonna send in their postcard, you know? And, I don't know, I just, I really appreciate what you did on the first item, splitting them up. I think it was right. I apologize, Mr. Duncan, if I prejudged you based on your statement, you know? I'll say that publicly, I'm mad enough to do that, but, um, you know? Good luck. I just, you know, I really hope that you would, if you got enough money to get through things, I get it, you're not gonna- When my bank account runs, when the town went broke, when we didn't have any money, we couldn't just go out and get it from all of the citizens. We just couldn't do it. We still had to provide police officers, we still had to provide firemen, and we did it. And we did it, and yeah, and so, you know, this is just ludicrous to me to say, okay, we lost three hundred thousand dollars, so here, you guys give it back to me right now. Yeah, you gotta have a prudent reserve, and you have one. And you'll be able to build it back. But you know, go slow, it's a holiday season. God bless everybody.
Thank you. Lauren?
Warren Harvey, Paradise resident. Um, about the, about the George and Kevin saving money, that was an emotional plea, I understand that, but let me give you one. I've got an old pickup and it gets about sixteen miles a gallon. And I'd love to have one of those new Dodge diesels that gets twenty-seven, because I'd save a lot of money. The trouble of it is, I can't afford the forty-five thousand it takes to buy it. So, so that's what I'm telling you about that. You can read into it what you want. The other thing is, about your four meters, that sounds really good, Mr. Duncan, but the thing is, does the public know you get sixteen thousand dollars worth of health insurance here a year? And you get paid a hundred dollars for every, for every meeting that you attend? So that ten dollars a month on those four meters is forty bucks a month. And how many meetings do you attend at a hundred dollars apiece? You're not sacrificing like we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Yes, John?
In, in looking at this, I understand you're in a rough position. The tills are running dry, you did a little bit of a pinky in a hole that should take a thumb in your last motion. I think you did the right thing. Uh, however, in looking at this ten thousand, or ten dollar, a hundred thousand dollar a month, uh, I've got some other suggestions that you look at and maybe delay this vote for a week and have a special meeting. I think this was brought up real quick. Uh, number one would be, I see you have over a half million dollars in outstanding on the processed water recycling to the engineer that's already under contract. I understand that totally. And it's gonna take a mutual party agreement, or you'll be giving him money. Uh, but what if you would take and go to the state and say very simply, we are in a severe money crisis right now. We need an extension on complying with this project. We are gonna take, we aren't gonna do away with this contract. We are gonna do a six-month moratorium on it. We're gonna stop it where it's at. We're gonna stop spending the money right now. We're gonna pay the bill up to date and we're gonna use, just like Walmart did with the town. Stop on our EIR, stop on everything. Don't spend any more money until we get past this. And in going to the state with that, say, you asked us to cut back. We have cut back, we have done nearly double what you asked for, or what you asked the rest of the state to do. We've done one and a half, and we, we need some concessions if we're gonna do this. See what kinda response you get from them. I'm sure it's not gonna be a quick one. But at least put it on the table to them. That's the first thing. The second thing is, uh, I was represented for eighteen years by the International Association of Firefighters. When our municipality ran low on money, they would come to the union and they would say, real simply, we are gonna lay off eight of you, we're gonna close the station, or if you guys will take a three percent, five percent, whatever the number was, depending on what the circumstance, cut for a ninety-day period, we won't lay anybody off. We always looked at it, we were a brotherhood, we worked together, everybody got along. Uh, we did a temporary amended, it took them having a special vote, but we took a temporary amendam, you know, to our, to our contract to get through it. Uh, the other thing, what if the board members, I, I was, I was amazed when I saw that you guys get paid by the meeting. Uh, and granted, it's on this amount, it's a token. But I don't know if the right number is a fifty percent cut, or fifty percent, I don't want it to be a cut, I don't want it to go away. But during this hard time, you agree to waive your payments for your attending of your meetings for the period that this would have been in effect. Give Kevin time to look at these numbers, get the response. Maybe he can do it in a week. Uh, try and show the public that you guys are doing something, too. Uh, I know the healthcare can be a really rough thing when you're talking a thousand about dollars a month per person. Uh, may, maybe, maybe instead of doing the meeting thing, you say that your meetings apply to your health, whatever. But I think we need to show that the district is doing something also. And I think the state, and you might wanna let our legislatures know what you're doing, that we're, we've done what you've asked us to do to save water. We are suffering because of it, but you're still imposing all these additional fees on us, on these additional regulations. Give us a moratorium. Give us some time so that maybe, hopefully, this drought thing goes away and our revenues come back up and we can move forward. But don't make us spend this half million dollars just on engineering and try and plan for this thing in the meantime. But if you take this and throw those things out, it will, uh, help greatly in the public's perception, whether, whether it's reality or perception, of, oh, the first thing we did is just went to the public to get more money. Because I think if you do this, it's gonna get a lot of people's attention and you're gonna have a lot more challenge on the 218. And it may come to nip you in the butt in getting it passed. So bite the bullet, sum yourself now and try. I'm not saying that everybody's gonna, you know, jump up and down and say, yes, I want the cut. Uh, or yes, I'm gonna work a thirty-two hour week, instead of being laid off and have this. But if you try it first, and maybe it takes a week, maybe it takes a two week, your, your public perception is gonna be better. Maybe, maybe it'll be a five dollar. Uh, I think it's a move in the right direction. And to take a vote on this tonight is, uh, when it only case, as Mr. Kellogg said, as it came out last week, is a, is a move too quick and it would be a great move to wait.
Thank you, John, for your comments. I'll speak to one part there, and that is that the way this district does business is one meeting a month for the board. All of the data that's accumulated that the directors want on the agenda or staff does gets accumulated and put on the agenda. The agenda is prepared the week before the board meeting and it is distributed to the entire board of directors on Friday afternoon. So, Bill complains that he doesn't get to read it until Monday night. But the, the, the actual situation is, he doesn't wanna deal with the equipment that we have provided to suck up this board packet, read through it, and, uh,
I wanna correct you on this.
And, uh,
It's online Thursday afternoon?
We bring every Friday afternoon.
I know it's online Thursday afternoon.
Thursday, isn't it Thursday?
No.
Oh, Friday, Friday.
It's Fridays.
It's all online.
Yes, and I can get it on my computer. I, I don't need an iPad to-
Well, you made everybody believe you didn't get the package until Monday, Bill.
Well, I didn't get the package to read because it was a hundred and fifty pages and I didn't wanna-
It's always a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and eighty pages. It's a lot of work. And it usually takes board members who wanna read everything that's in there the weekend to get through this work. But that's the way we do business. That's what's expected of a board member, to read it on the weekend, address issues, questions, concerns with staff on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday up until six PM. And then make business decisions. We do it all the time, it's not a surprise.
Can the public found out Wednesday from the newspaper?
Don't encourage them.
Well, that's right. Don't encourage them.
Don't encourage them.
And I, I can't, you know-
Check your Facebook page.
The, the- Everything that we put, when we issue the, uh, the agenda packet, it is available to the public and we, we post it. So, I can't, I can't place a copy in every single person's hand.
I was confused, the deadlines.
One of the other comments made was that board member cuts. You guys forget that we live in this district? Do you think that we don't have the same impact you have? The other ten thousand people have? So when we cut, when, when we issue a rate increase, we pay it. We pay the extra ten dollars a meter, we pay whatever the percentage rate increase is. Just seems kinda strange that you think we need to, um, cut back further. Um, and there was another comment, and I'm gonna address that. I do not assume that we're trying to trick the public. That we're looking to get people who fail to vote in order to sneak a, a rate increase in on the public. Uh, you guys, what do we have? We have, we have twenty, twenty-five, thirty people? There's, there's ten thousand meter holders. There's twenty-five or twenty-eight thousand people here. What I really think will happen is, with all the work we put into the proposition 218, trying to make it understandable, make it fair, make it so people can understand what we're doing to the best we can with the law that we're working with, my expectation is that the public will expect that prices increase. And if it's a reasonable price increase, that the public will say, yes. Let's keep this, this system operating, let's keep our water coming, let's keep this, this district moving forward. So, th- those are my comments on that. Public comments, anybody else?
Any more, you wanted, since we have some more input, we wanted to make sure.
We have a couple of questions, they all want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you, you can.
There's more.
Okay.
We gotta stay longer.
So, anybody else wanna speak to the ten dollar surcharge? Thank you. Then we're, we're back to the board. Any of the board members wanna, wanna take another run at your position or comments? Then we are going to take a roll call vote, once again, please.
Could we ask? Can we have the motion? Secretary, would you, could you give us the highlights of the motion?
It's right there.
The motion by President Corle, the second vice president, by Senator Corle, for dropping ten dollars in the municipal surcharge, with surcharge, beginning at the first billing cycle in November and continuing until a new rate structure is in effect.
That's enough. Thank you. I just wanted to get the first part. Thank you.
Roll call. Vice President Corle?
No.
Director Duncan?
No.
Director Pleschler?
No.
Director Calhoun?
Of course, no.
President Hunt?
Yes, so the motion carries, one against four. The, uh, the motion is, is the, uh, is defeated, four to one. And we are now going to move on to the next item of business, item eight B. Which is expansion of Paradise Lake recreational activities. Manager Barber, would you like to introduce this for us, please?
Sure. Um, this is something that came from the Lake Committee. Um, we talk about different options at the lake. There was an item of public request regarding paddleboard weekend, or paddleboarding. And the committee was not too much in favor of that as an overall general approved activity. But, uh, we did get support from the committee to present to the board an opportunity for, uh, one weekend a year that we would designate for paddleboarding and a dog day event with some type of fee assessed for those activities that would go into fund Kids Fishing Day. So, all we need is, uh, what we're asking the board is to take, to give us, yes, you would like to see that happen or not. And the committee will take it from there and set up the date and work with CR to, to advertise it and move through the process.
Set up the rules?
Set up the rules.
Paddleboard day?
For an event, the committee can set it up.
You know, the thing that I wondered when I got that, in the fifty, sixties and seventies, I was very active in water skiing and paddleboarding and all kinds of stuff. Never too good at paddleboarding. And I've made some calls since then. The best way to get off of a paddleboard is to fall in the water and swim. So, and sometimes you get on it, and one of us is a professional paddleboarder. In fact, he's Gary Powers, Claude Powers' son. And, uh, he does that, he, he has to have a nice sandy beach and he floats out, you know, and he's off, steps out in the water and he, he, even he falls off. So what we're doing, I think, is we're gonna, uh, agree that swimming is all right. One weekend a year. I realize it's one weekend a year.
Well, that's not even that, aren't, isn't this the test?
Yeah, it's just a test.
It's just be one weekend.
One weekend.
Okay, but it's just a test.
Next year.
Essentially, we do put people in the water.
Can I comment on this?
Yes, you may.
From, on the Lake Committee, I voted against this. One other member of the Lake Committee voted against it. We're talking about sanitation, sanitation of a lake. We're talking about sanitation, sanitation of a lake that's used for drinking water. We're not talking about playing. We've gone to long extensive times over the years to make sure no body touched the water in fishing or running kayaks or anything else because of that. When I was in college, I took a bacteriology class, studied bacteria. Most of the class was nurses. And we talked about diseases and so forth, and all the different germs, and how you could identify gram negative and gram positive and all that. But we're talking about comical, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce all these words, comical diseases. This is not a fun thing. Today, in the paper and on the Internet, was a story about a water in a restaurant in the Bay Area, and how 90-some people went to the hospital because employees didn't wash their hands. And it was a very comical disease, a disease that passed from each other and the restaurant is closed and all that. Now, if we, if that same disease, where somebody went up to the lake, didn't know they had it, evidently they didn't know in that restaurant either, and it got into the lake and some other people got in right behind him in the same area, I'm telling you, it wouldn't take much if there were the right bacteria to explode and somebody else will be sick. And we would have a big headache, to say the least. This is, to me, is something that, this has got to be a joke, just a bad joke.
Make a motion then.
Yes, I make a motion that we do not approve paddleboarding or dog day. Doug has a story about dogs. I'd like him, we can do that. Thanks, you, Seth.
We have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion?
I think Doug needs to tell us a dog story.
Well, I would like to ask a question, first of all, because I'm looking at these two lakes over there, and I'm going to set this up. Do we have any reservoirs that are used for drinking water, kind of like near us, like maybe Lake Orville, where boating and water skiing and swimming and fishing is allowed?
Yes.
Well, how about that?
What about the water from South Feather? Where does it come from?
Lake Orville.
South Feather River.
Comes from a river? Do they allow swimming and boating, all that?
The river?
Up above.
Little Grass Valley.
So I just wanted to make that point. Go ahead, George.
Well, my point is, I just want to make it clear. Jim agrees with me. We have a state-of-the-art treatment plant. That's what it's designed for. It can handle this. That's not really the issue. The committee talked about it. The real reason now we don't want to allow swimming is we can't manage it because it would attract so many people. We couldn't handle it. You have a stretch of Little Butte Creek between Paradise and Megalia. Part of it's Forest Service land. We have no rules about not swimming in Little Butte Creek. We don't control it. That's right near the intake. So I just, I appreciate you being against it, but I didn't want the public to think that your reasoning for it, we don't protect against. That's our job. That's what we do. That's what the plant's designed for.
I have no problem with what comes out of the water treatment plant. But the little canyon you're talking about, recently Greg had to get some people out of there that were camping along the creek to make sure that they didn't do anything into the creek and didn't make dinner there and everything else. We don't allow barbecues up at the lake. There's all reasons for years that the management of this district has tried very hard to keep it. It's a pristine lake. It is not a river. A river actually cleans itself with oxygen and other things. There's different ways you manage water. And this is not a place to manage water so foolishly because this water doesn't move except when it goes underneath the dam and down that creek. It may get some sanitation there. Then it goes into the pipe and comes down to our water treatment park. It's all sealed then. I understand all that. But what I also understand, because of my education, is that we're playing with fire. We should just leave it alone. Don't get involved. This is a big mistake. It may seem fun. It may seem like it's something you can do. And Greg at the meeting said he never had anybody asked to put a paddleboard in the water.
I have a question for Jim. One of the paddleboarders that I called to talk to you about it, introduced what I was doing, that I used to paddleboard, never was good at it. Okay, say, like, we had a weekend and we had 100 people up there, for our figures, swimming and paddleboarding, that's what would happen, you know? What would that do to the treatment plant? Would you have to put more chlorate or would it make any difference? Probably wouldn't affect the water at all.
It would not change our operation. It would not change.
Yeah. Well, you know, I have a swimming pool. It's a $35,000 swimming pool, and I've taken classes. And a large breed dog swimming in your pool is the equivalent of 50 swimmers. That's what they say, you know? When people let their dogs swim in the pool, they got a big thing.
Probably as far as hair goes.
With our 6,000 acre feet of water in there, it wouldn't make any difference.
The answer, that's correct.
It would change, yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, we did this once before with dogs, and there was some people here, maybe there is tonight, that were really against letting dogs because...
But is there any public here to run the dog?
Well, I will.
I think we, you know, we can probably shorten this topic considerably if we just do a vote.
Well, I want to ask the public, though, because we historically go back. Anybody want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you.
We got, okay.
I do consider our lake, not only as our water supply, but a pristine feature, like the Golden Nugget Museum, Terri Ash Rec Center, one of the stars of our community. Every time we have friends come up to visit us, because we still have many friends in the Bay Area, we take them to see these places, Depot Museum, et cetera. We get up there and it's kind of like, oh my gosh. How do you keep it like this? Well, it's simple. We have some very plain, simple rules. People don't go in the water. Dogs are not allowed. Wow, I wish they had that at the reservoir near me. Or some similar comment. Everybody feels that way. You get up there, it's like, we have got to preserve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, John?
We've been following very closely the toilet-to-tap movement and the state-established guidelines. And in looking at the processes that you use at the plant and the operation of the plants, there is no way that anything from human swimming could affect the water quality down here. However, what could affect it, and I think Jim will agree, is we've got a major problem with pharmaceuticals that the plants really don't address. And something as easy as 100 estrogen tablets in a million gallons of water, it doesn't go away in the treatment process that you're using or 90% of the septic systems. And we've got a far greater risk with a fisherman dropping, and not just estrogen, but other pharmaceuticals, dropping a bottle of pills in the lake than we do if we open it up to swimming and dogs and everything else. Because our treatment processes, science hasn't developed something that works on it. So I would say, go for the swimming, but, you know, our threat, our threat's pharmaceuticals. Our threat's not, you know, bacterial, it's easy to cure.
No medicines allowed.
Say no to drugs.
Any other public comments? At this point, we're back to the board. Any other discussion? There being none, we're going to call for a vote on this there. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote again. The vote is to not allow paddleboard weekend or a dog day.
President, call. Vice President, call.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Director of the House?
No.
Director Kellogg?
Yes. Doug, did you realize how you voted?
I guess, I meant to vote against it.
The answer, the motion was defeated.
The motion was against it.
Three to two.
The motion was against it.
The motion was against it, and you voted against the motion.
And I make a motion to that we authorize the general manager to establish a dog day and a paddleboard weekend at Paradise Lake.
So you want to change your vote, Doug?
Too late, too late.
It was recorded.
Too late.
It was recorded and I announced it. But we're back voting.
We're back voting again.
We're back voting again.
What are we voting on?
Is that because of B?
I don't know. Because of the...
We don't know yet.
The first motion failed.
The first motion failed. To not have it fail.
So anyhow, it's on there. Do we need to discuss it or are we ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
I'd like a roll call vote again, but read my motion again.
President, have the motion to authorize the general manager to establish a dog day and a paddleboard weekend at Paradise Lake and bring it back to the committee to establish the organization and rules for the events and return to the board for final review of the planning before the events are implemented.
I said all that. Great. Thank you. Everybody on the same page this time?
I'll say so.
Roll call, please.
Director of the House?
No.
Director of the House?
Yes.
Director of the House?
No.
Director Kellogg?
Yes. The motion fails, three to two.
It's a 3-2-2, really.
Thank you very much, Seth.
We're moving on.
Appreciate it.
Poor dogs.
Poor dogs.
We're moving on to director elections. Okay, this is mine, and I don't want to reread all this. You've all had an opportunity to read through it. I brought this up a couple of years ago and was defeated at that time because it's, we really didn't want to spend $20,000 to go to a general election to try and make this change. We just, the board, the majority of the board decided it, and it wasn't money wisely spent. I continue to grapple with the way that we have an election by the populace at large, but each individual director represents a geographic division, and the rules are that you have to live in your geographic division. So what if the best candidates that want to run for election next year happen to live down in, because next year, there's, you and I are up for election, so one and whatever your number is. You're four? You're five? Oh. So divisions one and five. So what if next year, there's some really outstanding candidates in Division Two or Three, and they want to run for election, they can't do it? So I'm trying to just make this, the way we're elected anyhow, is by the majority vote of all of the voters. I've given some ludicrous examples here once again, saying that in Division One, the person who wants to run, could run, receive 0% of the votes cast for Division One that he's going to represent, but be elected and win the election because the people in Two, Three, Four, Five voted for him. And the same thing can happen in reverse in Division One. If I run, I could receive 100% of the votes, not likely, but I could, and end up losing the election because people in Two, Three, Four, and Five voted for somebody else. So since we're elected that way anyhow, I'm suggesting that we just remove the residency requirement and continue to elect at large the majority of the votes for the positions running. What that would mean is that if there's two seats that are up, then the two top vote getters of all four, five, or six, whoever runs for the election, win. Win the other three, two years later, when the other three divisions run, then the three top vote getters become elected for that. And I'm saying, does it really matter where they live? We represent the entire public, not just the people in Division One, not just the people in Division Five. It seems logical. I'm bringing it up again, I'm bringing it up again for us to do without a high cost of money. And the way that we would do that is ask our state Assemblyman Gallagher to represent a bill that we would authorize our attorney to draft. We do all the legwork, all the grunt work, make the bill, and that way we get it the way we want it. If the board approves it then, it's taken to Gallagher. We ask him to take it forward to the Assembly. And if he presents it and it passes by the legislature, then we have the rule change. And we don't, that'll cost us maybe several thousand dollars for our attorney. And it's not an expensive way to get that done.
Do I understand you right that this is a state law? That we have divisions?
I, it's a water...
Currently, the Irrigation District Act requires your current method of voting, residency, and those requirements. So this, and there are examples of other irrigation districts throughout the state that have received special legislation. For example, Richfield Irrigation District, one of my other clients, they have special legislation that they got in the 50s that allows them to vote in a unique way. So this would be along those lines.
Well, they, they're a small, they're a small district and people that live in it, but they're a huge district for the amount of water they put out.
Right. And that was their change. They didn't have a resident voting. They wanted landowner voting.
Yeah, landowner. That makes sense for that district. Yes, very much so.
Well, the town council is elected this way. They don't have to live in a certain area in town.
So is the school board now? They switched a few years ago.
They switched, too. I get calls from customers, I never ask them, well, what division are you in? Because I'm in Three, and if you're not in Three, I'm not going to talk to you. I talk to people in every division.
Brian, I'm sure we all do.
We all do. And so therefore, it doesn't make sense to, especially since everyone votes for it, you, no matter what division they live in.
Yeah, I think that, I don't think this is, if you have an election, which we're going to have this fall, that means we'll have two incumbents running against other people. And from what I know, there's, some people are going to run against one person, but nobody is going to run against the other person. So if we leave the divisions where we are now, there probably won't be a need for election in one district and there will be in the other, or division, I should say. The other thing is that the cost, attorney costs and going to the Assemblymen, and somebody's going to have to go down to these committee meetings and represent the district. And I don't think our customers or the owners of the district are going to gain anything by this. I didn't realize it was a state law. As far as it being an annotated act, I can't pronounce that either. The City of Chico, they have some people in the City of Chico that want to go to this. Whether they get it, I don't know. So I think we're better off just staying where we are. We don't spend attorney costs. We continue to operate, and we certainly don't need to spend any more extra money on something to me is frivolous. And then I asked Dustin, after we got out of closed session, if he could explain the exceptions that are in the current laws or rules governing how you can be in your division or even out of it and still serve as a director.
So you have to be a resident of your division, a voter, and a landowner. Now, there's an exception for a landowner in districts of a, urban districts of a certain size that have urban water management plans, as this district does, where that landowner requirement goes away. And so theoretically, a renter can also be a board member, provided they reside in the division and are a registered voter in the division. Now residency, this issue of residency has been before this board in the past. And the residency rules are not as black and white as just where do you sleep the majority of the time. There's an intent element, and I'm sure Director Duncan, with his tax background, could maybe speak to some of these issues as well. But, because the tax code really gets into this. Are you a resident of Nevada? Are you a resident in California for income tax purposes? So the IRS has about a 20-factor test that they get into that tries to flesh out, okay, where's your true residency? And I think we would go through a similar type of analysis. If there was a candidate and there was some kind of question about whether they truly resided in the division or not, and thus were eligible for the seat, we'd probably go through a similar type of analysis.
Thank you very much.
So the reason that I brought it up was because I thought it was more fair to the public. The public can recruit, find people, find the best candidate, ask people, are you interested? You're retired now. Do you have time? All throughout the district, it seems to me to be a win-win situation for the public, giving them more options and more opportunities of who can run. giving them more options and more opportunities of who can run for representation up here.
I move we authorize the general manager to utilize legal counsel to draft legislation that would allow the district to change its election process and to contact Assemblyman Gallagher and with regards to presenting the legislation to the state legislature.
I'll second.
Has anybody talked to him?
Not yet.
Oh, pardon.
Go ahead. I was going to ask.
Has anybody talked to James? I know James quite well.
No, but that's what they're there for.
That's what they're, I realize that's what they're there for. Well, this is going to cost us several thousand dollars.
Well, we're going to ask that.
You're going to do it by a vote?
Yeah. Let me fit it.
Ask for an approximation, maybe.
Yeah, okay. How much would you say?
Yeah, I think three thousand is a fair estimate.
Plus, you're going to have to go down there and meet with them, or they're the...
That'd be my job.
I think that's staff. I would note that I'm part of Aqua's State Ledge Committee, so, and PID is one of many clients of mine that share in the cost of that expense. So we see every water-related bill that goes through the legislature every year. So, you know, I'm positioned in that role to, if you want to move forward with this proposed bill, I'm in a position where I can direct, hopefully, Aqua's lobbyists to assist us with lobbying efforts.
Yeah. Yeah, I think too much. Anyway, I'm in a unique situation. The property that I own and live on in Division Five has been on our property since 1949. And the wife and I have lived there for over 50 years. It's too big, and it's a two-story house, and we're in the process of selling it. And I thought I was staying in Division Five, so I would have a vested interest. And I think this is a good move, because it would open more people up to be able to run and all kinds of stuff. And I'm a bit afraid to run it against anyone. I put a campaign together, and I feel I would be the top vote here, so that is the type of thing. So if this was an effect that I can live any place in paradise.
Correct.
Although I like the Fifth District real well, because it's a banana belt.
Love the snow.
Any other comments or questions from the board before I go to the public?
No.
Yes, John? Oh, where are we?
No, John, you've got to be quicker.
Board sits back there because...
Quick like Neil.
Thank you, Board, Board Abriel. First, frankly, I think you have much more important to do, that's serious business for the district than this. Second thing is, a lot of voters are already confused, and we're not anywhere near an election yet. This is just one more confusion for the electorate to have to deal with. And frankly, I appreciate what you said, but I don't think that's very well-written. Just a personal comment.
I think it's written great.
I got you.
Real simple. I support the concept 100%, however, it is the wrong time. You just got done saying we're in dire straits for money, and we've got to charge the people $10 a meter. Well, I'm sorry, if it's $3,000, that's 300 $10 bills.
We voted against that.
Well, they want to. I'm just saying. You're saying you're tight on money.
The board didn't say they want to. We said no.
Somebody put it there. Make a long story short, then you're lying about the dire straits? I don't think so. You're in dire straits to take $3,000 or $6,000 or whatever it's going to cost. If it's $500, it's too much right now. I'm not saying in three or six months that if we get through this and the rate increase is there, that it's not a good thing to move forward. But in one meeting to tell the people that we're in such dire straits, that we need this emergency thing and everything else, and then spend $6,000 on something that's unnecessary...
Where did it go to six?
Pardon?
Where did you double it?
Anytime an attorney tells you three, it's just, okay, in the end, if you do it, in the end, let me know what it costs. But let's, okay, let's say it's $3,000.
Will you give us the difference between three and six?
Hell, no. But just, it's not the right time to spend anything extra, whether it's $5 extra in gas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? We're back to the board then. Any further discussion before we vote?
I just...
Go ahead, Bill.
I have one question of all the directors. You can answer, you can answer or not answer it. Do you live in your division?
Yes. Yes, I do. I passed the 20...
No, I understand.
From the IRS, I passed it. I own two places.
No, I don't have to say anything.
Okay, well, but I do.
I understand.
The reason I want to do this is because I've been elected four or five times, and I haven't had anybody run against me. So I don't even know if the people like me or not. So I want to find out. I want to find out. Maybe that, too. You know, after tonight. I make at least 12 cents an hour doing this job, you know?
Yeah, our $100 flat fee.
It's like a dairy. You get 50 cents an hour for milk and them damn cows to feed them, you know? What you got to do is you just got to get more cows and send more hours.
Yeah. So the answer to your question, Bill, is that I meet the residency requirements of my district. This board has gone through this ad nauseam, and so, yes. And not only do I live in my district, what district are we in now?
I have one.
My district goes...
Three.
Three. We're in my district.
I'm living right now.
I stay here, I stay living right now.
I am. I am alive.
Are you a division?
I'm in Division Three. I'm living in Division Three.
And your division is Three?
No, mine's Three.
Yeah. Your division's One.
At this moment, I'm living in Division Three. Mine is Division One. I live in Division One. I have a residence in Division One. I pay taxes in Division One. I vote in Division One.
Anyway, will you pay my taxes?
No.
Can I put another comment in?
Yes.
Lord behold, if the Post didn't come out, I think it was because of your thing here, which I think is really good, that it's time to take the adria to the red source. But even before I read the editorial, I put some notes on here, which you can see that I do, and all taxpayers should vote for this, and that's what the Post said on their deal. And I really feel that. And I'd like to see it passed, if you want to know the truth, because of the fact that this opens up where I believe, anywhere I want to in paradise. But I think it's the wrong time. You know, we spent half the damn night here talking about saving money, and it's just, I think it's just the wrong time. It is a kind of a backdoor way to get there, and I've done a lot of politicians type things with...
You've done a lot of those backdoor things, haven't you?
Yes, I sure have done, and they work. They also cost you money. A lot of the educational things that happen in the state, oh, yeah, big time, I agree. You know, they're all legal, though. Oh, yeah, they're all legal. We've got real cool shysters like Dustin, who are keeping the law straight.
Whoa. I'll call for the question, Seth.
I've been waiting.
We're waiting.
We're going to do roll call vote on this, too.
Roll call vote.
Please.
Director McCullough?
No.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
No.
Director McCullough?
No.
President Hens?
Yes. Motion fails three to two. We're moving to item 8D, BCSDA.
I know you're moved, we're going to let that.
What?
Are there $20,000, you know, to get into the last?
We're done.
No, no, wait, let me interject this.
Okay.
If we have a contest where there's somebody running against me, or Ken, or we have two or three people, which could be very possible, and we're all in the books down there, would it still cost us $20,000 to get this on the ballot?
No, it'd be cheaper, but the process to get it on the ballot takes too much time for you to wait to find out if somebody's actually...
Well, I'm not talking about...
Going to be contesting the seats at that point.
I'm talking, see, that would give everybody two years.
No, do you listen to him?
I did.
No, you didn't. Listen again.
If you, if you wanted to wait to see if we have an election, it's too late to get your initiative on the ballot. So you, when we tell you it's $20,000, that's because the only thing we can do is assume there's no election, because you don't have enough time to do it after you've found out you're going to have an election.
Would we know there's an election?
There's nothing but the candidates, nothing's going on.
We could get it on the ballot. Now, it wouldn't affect the candidates' minds, but the next time it would be open.
But there's not enough time to do it.
They win, who knows?
You have to decide to do it now, so we can prepare for the vote and get it in there. And if nobody contests you two, we're still going to pay the 20 grand plus or minus to do it.
I think it's the wrong time. It would have been the right time for me to call for this.
With me, when I didn't have people run against me, that saved the district money.
Sure did.
Sure, but they may not have got the best guy.
Okay, we're moving on to item 8D. Butte County Special District Association requests for nomination.
I'll nominate Doug Fletcher for the executive board member, PID, from PID.
What are the openings that we have available here?
We have two enterprises, and that's it. Well, then, I guess non-enterprise, too.
So you nominate him to be on the executive board representing PID in addition to me representing PID.
You want to put your name on?
He's already on there.
Already on, okay.
So you're going to have two people from PID.
Seems like now's not the time to spend that extra money. Going down to Orville, buying the lunch.
Wow.
Getting paid that extra $100 for...
You could have paid for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's big bucks.
Yeah.
You can bring a sack lunch if you want to. Okay, I nominate George Barber.
Ah, he left.
He's left around, yeah.
I know it.
George is already on it.
No, he's one that's coming up.
See, his term is expiring.
Is expiring.
Is your term expiring?
No.
Not for another two years. It's a four-year cycle.
Will there only be one of us on, or do there be two of us?
One.
I don't know.
Oh, you can have two people in the same district, yeah.
We've done that before. We have the general manager and a board member.
Actually, you know, then you'll have three.
Yeah, you...
Because I'm from the LaFco representative.
You look around the other side, yeah.
I don't know if that would be fair.
Well, do we want to nominate anybody for the non-enterprise executive?
I nominate Trinka.
Trinka?
We did that last time.
I know, but he's good. The thing is, you have, I've been on the board, I've been on it for as long as I've been on this board, and our biggest problem is getting a quorum. And the people that show up regularly are George Barber and Mike Trinka.
Well, I'd like to nominate Mary Thompson on the non-enterprise. She does an outstanding job with the county resource conservation district. She's the chair, president of the board.
I don't even know if she's on there now.
Yeah, she's on there now, just like...
Was she there at the meeting? Was she there at the meeting?
I...
Mary, I don't think she was.
I think she was.
I don't think she shows up regularly.
Wait, what?
To enterprise district, to non-enterprise.
Right. But I don't think Mary's been showing up. And so why would you want to nominate her if she isn't showing up?
I just see her at the Butte County Resource Conservation District meeting, and she does a very good job.
Not when she doesn't show up.
Well, I don't know, I don't go to these meetings.
I know.
Was she at the dinner the other night?
No, that's what I'm saying. She wasn't at the free dinner. Well, it wasn't free, yeah. Maybe that was the reason.
Her and her husband have a small sheep ranch outside of Claremont, so...
Yeah, you and Doug are both nominated for the enterprise.
Do I have the same caveat that I quit if I'm elected president?
Yes, yes.
I would do that.
Can you put that in the motion?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll put that in the motion.
Protection.
Let's see, who else is there? See, the ones going, I get, non, okay, so you, okay. So I guess Jim Edwards is out then, as far as we're concerned.
Well, does he show up any more than Mary does?
Lot more.
Yeah.
He's there all the time. But he's, but he's, he's enterprise.
Hmm.
And you nominated Doug.
Mike Trinka's...
Why should he? Why should he like, you know, I would show up?
Yeah.
Because I would go to those...
You know, other agencies may make a nomination, too, so you don't have to fill all the slots.
There's going to be a ballot, and we'll vote on it. These are just nominations.
Yeah, these are nominations. So the other districts have...
Okay, so we've got Mike and Mary.
Mary and Doug and George.
Right, we just, we vote on this nomination, but that doesn't make...
I make a motion that we, Mike Trinka, Mary Thompson, Doug Fletcher, and George Barber will nominate from PID District for the Special District Association's board members.
Second.
Doug and George being on the executive for the enterprise, and Mike and Mary being on for the non-enterprise.
Second.
Can I make a comment before the vote?
Oh, and I amended to say that if he's elected, if he's nominated, elected a president, he can resign.
Well, make amendment to the motion.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay.
Can I make another comment, just to make sure the board's clear?
Please.
Ken is on for two more years. So if you nominate Doug and me, that's three PID people showing up. Four with Larry, because he's the LaFco recommended.
Is that wrong?
Maybe the other districts will look at it and vote for it.
Well, there's nothing wrong with it. I just wanted to make sure the board members knew it.
Right.
And that's also $100 a meeting for each one of them.
Yeah, I make amendment to the motion. I want to second Larry's amendment to the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, you know what amendment was, that if he gets elected president, he can resign.
I just second him.
It's been...
Larry made the amendment.
I was waiting to be served, because I went from Juile Hall over there. I'd been teaching all afternoon, and I had a great time. They were counting, you know, and they counted four or five plus to the guest, and they were really oppressed. We made a pretty significant number of people there.
We didn't have a quorum, though. We didn't have a quorum. We had 26 people there, but we didn't have a quorum.
George?
I just want to make one more point, although you can carefully wager your way through the Brown Act, but having three board members at a meeting in Orville doesn't look right.
If we don't, we have to not talk, they have to not talk about PID in that meeting.
And I have full faith they won't, but it doesn't look good.
We don't even sit next to each other.
We actually had four people the other night.
Well, yeah, but that...
It's a special man.
That's a ceremonial...
We didn't have a business meeting then.
I call for the question.
In regard to the amendment?
Uh huh.
All those in favor of the amendment, say yes.
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 Yes. Any opposed? None, the amendment passed 5-0.
Question on the main motion?
Therefore, the main motion is for those nominations with that caveat that George can effectively bail and withdraw if the Butte County Special District Association tries to hoodwink him into being the president there. Maybe we shouldn't use the word hoodwinking. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1709.82]
Any opposed?
Now Seth, huh?
Motion passes four-one.
Okay, I, I wanna give Seth the present. When Kevin and I talked on the phone today, we decided to put off all of this stuff on the retirement program. We're gonna meet, not tonight, Kevin, but some other time. There's some questions I have and information I'd like to get changed or find. So with that, we do not have any, you can cross that off the agenda and we can go on to the next thing on the...
So that's a...
It's information only, so it's okay.
Oh, so no information was provided.
Well, I'll tell you, it would've taken at least a half hour.
The question is, the way it was left, if you drop it with no information provided, it's not on the agenda again without a request.
Right.
If you wanna make a motion to continue it to another meeting...
No, I'll, I'll put in a request to put it on the agenda.
Just wanted to make it clear.
Okay, I'm, now I didn't understand. You're, you're gonna, you're putting in a request now to have it on next month's agenda?
No, I'm not doing...
You would put it on if you choose to?
I have to put it in writing to the board. I'll put it in writing in the board after me and Kevin have a meeting and discuss it, okay?
Thank you. No information provided then?
No information provided.
We're moving to item number ten, committee reports. Uh, ad hoc water rate analysis committee. I'm the chairperson. You guys heard what the committee, uh, recommended. So I'm not gonna go back into it, because we've already moved and voted on it.
We didn't talk about...
I'm going to...
Is that all you're gonna say about it?
I didn't bring my notes.
Oh, okay, well, I'll say it.
Okay, good.
We also discussed the, uh, the, what do you, now he's gone. We discussed Prop two-eighteen, making sure that we were putting all ducts in row.
Well, we got, this, this thing about the, the ten-dollar surcharge, that was in kind of a stepchild of the meeting. It was an adjunct to it.
Right.
The majority of the meeting was in dealing with the two-eighteen proposition, what type of ideas we're talking about, which direction we're heading, what needs more study, what needs to be clarified with law. And that is still ongoing, and I think we're gonna have one more meeting before we have our workshop.
Yes.
Then no decisions were made otherwise.
Correct, thank you Larry. Uh, Water Conservation Committee, Director Kellogg, you're the chairperson?
No.
Okay, my, my, my thing says directors Kellogg and Kellogg.
You've gotta, you've gotta be the director. You're the only one on the committee.
Doug's the chairman.
Bill, you're part of it, I'll give it. We, we had a meeting, and it was really a great group of people. Ward's one of the key people in the thing. And one of the things that came out was that we talked about, maybe we talked about before, what we're thinking about doing up here at the corner where the garden's at, that DePietro was here earlier tonight, and he was the one that actually got it started up, I think. We were saying about buying vegetables, and then the drought hit, and they put it on the back shelf. But what came up, and I presented it, the corner up here where we call the Demonstration Garden, to be an ideal place to put drought-tolerant, low-water-use plants, you know? And we would have very little work. Once we got it started, we would put weed barriers where we would have weeds. We would have cylinder irrigation system to keep track of water and stuff, and we wouldn't need a fence. It would just, I think every time I drive by, I would go out there, it would make that corner look good. Gary Mendon was not able to attend to the meeting because of the fact that they've started their big sale, and they have people, I believe there's people there, cause I went out to him to see, and he's really interested in it, and he agreed. You know, you have a plant in a pot, even maybe it's a five-gallon pot. You really cannot see what the thing's gonna look like when it grows. And this way, people would, you know, see it. We would use the Bachelor Gardens and the Paradise, uh, Garden Club, and anybody else was getting involved in it. And we didn't, we just discussed it. And so what we would do, our next meeting is November sixth, I think, if it's ordered, I got it now.
November tenth.
Tenth, November tenth, okay. And if we decided we're, if we wouldn't do anything until the drought's over, okay? Yeah, so we just wouldn't do anything except maybe work the ground, and the staff didn't have a job. But if we talk about it again on the tenth of November, we'll put it on the agenda so we can talk about it in detail. We'll get an idea of the prices of the plant material, the weed barrier, some worms, something we get in down there, and we'll come back to you when we, when we grow. Does that make any sense? What else did we talk about, Bill?
The sign, uh, you're now coaching a native dirt guard.
Well, the, the...
Our word.
I've actually got a copy of the minutes here, so...
I don't, I didn't get a copy of them.
Somehow I got a copy.
I'll let you, Jim, put them on you. Jim?
Oh, your name here is, you're chairman. Bill, you're chairman, that's why you got a copy.
No, the minutes spelled out, directors Doug Fleischer, chairman, and Bill Kellogg. You guys wouldn't put me in charge. No, you gotta be kidding. You know, he never put me in charge of a committee. Jeez. Any reason.
Jim does a awesome job with the business.
Uh, yes, he did a very good job. And he talked about the reservoirs uptake, the water conservation program update. George discussed the following, discontinuing the monthly water conservation letters sent to customers with high water use. Due to extremely district-wide conservation, the letters are no longer needed, and the cost savings by doing this. In his report, he has what the cost savings is. Uh, community outreach, Mark Dale talked about water conservation has been great. Cedar Creek will be helping with the rate change outreach to customers, and there was six par, uh, party in the park appearances which were worthwhile. The Ridge Water Tour was successful. The hospital emergency fare was successful. Continued reduction in water use is possible. The latest shaded fuel break project provided an opportunity to discuss the watershed dynamics and its need for water. George mentioned there will be a UC expansion farm tour on November fourth, with attendance up to two-hundred people that will learn about agriculture and other water concerns on the ridge. Where is that gonna be at? I don't have it in the minutes.
I was gonna go over to my general manager's report.
Aquahawk participation, Mickey Rich discussed the following, two thousand two hundred ninety-three people have signed up. The goal is for three thousand to sign up, which is consistent with the online bill pairs. The letters produced by Aquahawk that provide monthly water usage figures compared to the district's conservation goal have been helpful in getting people to sign up. State mandated water conservation compliance, Jim Pastorelli discussed the following. One, state required the district to reduce thirty-six percent in June to February. The monthly conservation figures include the following. May forty-four percent, June forty-six, July forty-seven, August forty-five, and September thirty-one. The average from June to September is forty-two percent. The state's monthly conservation calculation is explained based on current monthly plant production compared to it in two thousand thirteen. The district is conserving more regionally compared to other water suppliers. Uh, update on water-saving devices program, water timers, application for local toilet purchase. George discussed the following. There are some timers left and spray nozzles sold out quickly. The toilet rebate program application has produced well. Seventy toilets were purchased, fifty-six delivered, and fourteen remain. However, the fourteen already have applications in progress, the process. The state's toilet and turf rebate program information is included on the district webpage. Smart controllers are, were discussed as a potential program. It might benefit how the controllers work. Demonstration garden, Doug has already talked about that. Uh, let's see. George explained that the corporation yard construction included a drought-tolerant landscape project that is on hold and due to the drought. The town required a similar drought-tolerant approach for the corporation yard. A twenty-thousand-dollar deposit was received by the town to ensure the landscape would be installed. If the district does not meet the requirements, the town will install the landscape with the district's funds. Considering scheduling for commuting, the next meeting is on Tuesday, November tenth, at nine a.m. Purpose of the earlier meeting schedules is to discuss the new water rate schedule. Adjournment nine forty-five.
How long was it deferred?
Pardon?
How long was it deferred, the landscaping?
Uh, I don't know. You ask George, cause he's, he's...
Till the drought's done.
Yeah.
Till the drought, wow. Could be forever.
It's just a deposit to make sure we do it.
We getting interest on it?
That's twenty more thousand in our reserves.
Thank you Director Kellogg. The third committee was Butte County Special District Association. That was the annual kind of a general meeting. It wasn't of just the executive board. We did not have a quorum, so no business could be conducted. It was down in Orville. It was attended by, uh, from the Paradise contingent with Doug, myself, Larry, and George. We had a turnout of about twenty-five, twenty-six people. And not quite, but maybe approximately half of those were guests. So we're a little disappointed in the, uh, in the membership. I think we have fifty special districts or forty?
I think we have fourteen, fourteen members.
Well, that's the executive board, but we have, I believe there's forty, forty or fifty districts, special districts that are in this consortium, but it doesn't seem to be very well populated. Therefore, it was over and...
There's only five people, five special districts.
We're moving on to item number eleven, the general manager's report.
You forgot about our presentation.
Our presentation?
Butte County Special District. The guy from...
Oh, well, yeah, okay. I, yeah, but since we didn't do this, this, I was...
We haven't had a quorum since Rick Hall was president.
No, I thought we had a quorum.
How many years ago was that?
You mean for the general...
At the general meeting.
Where are you?
Let's bring back...
I know what it says. Where are you?
Okay. General manager report.
Okay, yeah, my report. Um, like I said, I did a calculation. I've been tracking it every month when we do our monthly reports to the state. So when we triggered six hundred and twenty-three million gallons saved, um, in two thousand fifteen, our requirement by the state through February is to save six hundred and seventeen million to achieve our thirty-six percent reduction.
You already did it, yeah.
So that means we're done. So I stopped, um, staff from sending out our progress reports to our highest user customers and businesses, so that we were saving some money there. So we've met our requirement. We're there, so we can start using water again.
Is that three thou, is that three dollars or labor?
Three thousand dollars a month.
In?
In expenses.
Expenses, not labor.
So again, we can start using...
Labor's, process is pretty automated by the time you get to this letter.
Okay.
That's many.
There's that three, we saved on three thousand dollars?
Was that, we can start using water again?
Sure. We met our goal.
We met our goal.
It's too, it's too late for the state to get mad at us.
Maybe we should reduce rates to encourage water use and build up our revenues again?
There you go. Um, I'm working on the cost of service report as much as I can. I got input from the committee and legal counsel. I'm expanding some areas to make it more clear how it's working, and it's, it's moving along. Bill talked about the farm tour. It's UC Cooperation Cooperative Extension does a farm tour in Butte County. And this year they're focusing on Paradise, so it's a tour that starts at Chico State. Five buses, forty-some people on a bus, and they're gonna stop at Mendon's, Nobles, PID, and Butte College. And when they come here, we'll talk about a little history on irrigation and, um, and our conservation efforts. And a little Aquahawk talk, about thirty minutes a stop. So I'll be rolling through five buses, and it'll be a busy morning.
What day is that?
That is November, I brought it up so I could tell you. November fourth.
Is there any fees involved?
Uh, I don't know. You'd have to check with UC Cooperative Extension.
Okay.
We had a, a really good meeting with the state yesterday. We coordinated a meeting in the morning with the discharge, waste discharge folks, and then one in the afternoon with the drinking water folks. So we got to get our questions answered at this level of the project design report, or preliminary design report. Got some clarifications on fines and fees and what they're expecting. I think we talked last month, you talked while I was gone, you covered that with the board, the fine letter.
Yeah.
Anyhow, we've, any fines that we have for violating at this point, if they do issue us a fine, it can be offset by submitting invoices from our design work to try and fix the problem, so it won't be a payout. And then we had quite a few questions going forward about the ten percent recycle rate and all of those things in the afternoon session, and we got a lot of those cleared up. So it was a, a good meeting, and it's gonna help AECOM move forward. We've got a meeting with you folks on November twelfth, I think it is, to go over the preliminary design report. It's in the afternoon, because they're bringing their staff up. Our staff's here, so we don't have to pay them overtime unless you talk a long time. And the other reason in the winter that we have meetings in the afternoon is because I've had many comments over the years of our senior group who don't wanna drive at night, at ten o'clock at night. They'd like to attend meetings during the day, so that they can actually be here and feel like they can get here and get back. So that meeting's coming. Uh, we're working on that, working through the financing side. We've looked at all kinds of options for, for grant funding. Um, still working on it. Nothing's come through yet. That's about all I got.
That comment about that grant the state has, do we have a chance for getting any of that?
Prop one stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to get in all of it. There's some, it's, it's spread all over. We're trying, our problem is, is it's not a recycle project under the definition of recycle. So it gets, it gets pretty difficult to fit that project into a grant funding opportunity.
Yeah, right.
It is not considered recycle.
Not by the current definition of recycle.
Well, you were up there, uh, yesterday, I guess it was, was Doug Barber the one that was there with you most of the time?
Yeah, yep.
You see, like, where I said it?
Oh, yeah, they were, they were, we got good people on that side. They're trying to help us. I did have a Monday meeting, Aqua Region Two meeting. A lot of it was about Prop two-eighteen, and I'll kinda jump in on Dustin's legal report on, on the stuff we covered there.
Okay, I have a comment. I, is the graph on page one-ten yours?
Yes.
Okay. It, it just doesn't seem right to say monthly gallons per person per day. And, cause it's really a daily usage figure that we have there. Could you just leave off the word monthly? I think it's in, intuitively known that it's on a monthly basis.
Or I can say by month.
Okay.
Gallons per person.
But it's, it's, you know, two hundred and eighteen gallons per day, two hundred and fifteen gallons per day, two hundred and four gallons per day in, in those months of September, August, July.
The bottom of the graph has months on it.
Yep.
And the, the markers on the line are months-like markers, aren't they?
Yeah, they're, they're monthly numbers.
The graph looks fine to me.
It's gallons per day.
Not changing anything on the graph.
Yeah, it's not changing the graph.
Title on top.
Just the title?
Yeah.
I don't think that's necessary either.
Well, it doesn't cost us any money, Bill. Yeah, I guess you are. Uh, thank you very much for your report.
Yeah, that was a very good report, George. Just one quick question, okay, I'll just pull one out. Uh, June, a hundred, a hundred and ninety-one gallons per person?
Little mosquito.
Did that have to have been for irrigation?
Sorry.
A hundred and ninety-one doll, a hundred and ninety-one gallons per person?
They just take, it's irrigation, it's everything. It's farms.
Everything.
Take all our water, divide it by the people, by the days, okay?
It goes to the plant. But if you're not doing very much irrigation, you don't use very much water.
The state standard for minimum health and safety is fifty-five gallons per person per day.
You know, so you think about it, the big, I, I think drugs, you know, fifty-five gallons of drug, there's a lot of water in there. If you're just bathing and washing and dishes and flushing the toilet, all that kind of stuff, you know?
We use fifty ga, our house uses fifty gallons a day. We're below the average.
Okay. Thank you Doug.
Hey Larry, did you get rid of the outhouse yet, or?
We used the canyon.
Okay. Moving on to item number twelve, legal report, and this is gonna be a written-verbal update.
Yeah.
Written verbal?
So since George mentioned two-eighteen reform, I'll, uh, start with that. You have my letter there. Uh, Aqua has teamed with some other statewide associations to, um, pursue Proposition two-eighteen reform. And, you know, as a little bit of background, two-eighteen is actually a provision in the California Constitution. It was a voter initiative in nineteen ninety-six. So in order to amend a voter initiative, you need another voter initiative to, to revise the constitution. So that's the proposal. Uh, the...
Did you say that Proposition two-eighteen came into being in nineteen ninety-six?
Right.
But when would, when did it come into implementation against, I say against?
Water.
For water districts? Cause we weren't doing this in nineteen ninety-six.
Right, originally, there was, uh, some uncertainty about whether proposition, whether water is a property-related service. Proposition two-eighteen applies to property-related service. Proposition 218 applies to property-related services. So that's a legal phrase. What does that mean? So it took a number of years for that issue to address to the courts. And I think Big Horn was- Big Horn is the name of the case, Supreme Court case, 2002 or 2004. I don't recall exactly, but it was thereabouts, early 2000s, when, okay, the Supreme Court said water is a property-related service and thus requires compliance with 218, anytime you impose a new or adjusted rate.
But somehow they threw in the protest part instead of the majority vote.
No, that's always been included in the language. Now, it's- there's actually a two-step 218 process. Step one is you take it out to the customers, you see if there's a majority protest. If there is a majority protest, your proposed rate can't move forward. Step two comes into play for certain types of property-related services, such as stormwater, which I reference up there. Step two would be that affirmative 50% plus one vote. So if you want- if you're an agency that provides stormwater services, wants to propose a fee related to that, then you've got to step one, go out for the 218 process, not get a majority protest. And if you don't get a majority protest, step two is you go get a majority vote. That's why they want to relax the requirements. They want it to be more like water.
They got to vote on both ends of it?
Yep.
So it's stormwater?
Yeah, we don't touch stormwater.
No, we don't. Well, I've been thinking about touching it when I read your thing about the El Munial. How much- all that water that we don't save that goes down the hill?
Yeah, that's Butte Creek adjudication water. You want to be careful with that one.
I'm talking about the stuff that goes down Skyway.
So I didn't- you know, stormwater is not really an issue to any of my clients, so I didn't talk about that in my letter. But I did talk about the kind of reform to 218 itself in particular conservation pricing. And then what they call kind of the lifeline rate, which is basically a subsidy. Currently, some agencies have a very difficult time having tiered pricing and making it legally defensible. And you saw last spring, May or June, San Juan Capistrano was hit with the 218 case. They lost it. They lost it on the basis that they didn't justify their tiers and tie the tiers to the actual cost of service. Reading the proposed language, which is in your agenda packet, it would basically be an initiative to overrule that case. So you're still, as a district, required to charge no more than your cost of service holistically, collectively, from every single customer. But the district would have much more discretion in how to create tiers amongst customer classes and a little more leeway and not quite tying it exactly to the cost of service to the exact parcel. The- and I should say, this is written to be an optional alternative process. It's not mandatory. And I actually, I'll work with Aqua. I think that ought to be included in the language of the initiative. That is, the state can never mandate that any public agency use this funding mechanism. So that way, it's truly discretionary. PID, if this were passed, could use this alternative process or not. It would be up to you as a board. The lifeline rate is, I think, a good concept. I think there's folks out there that just fall on hard times. They can't afford their water bill. And Prop 218 is- really handcuffs the agency. You cannot use Prop 218 revenue to subsidize a customer. It's against the Constitution.
Just take it out of your general fund?
You can't- well, you can't do that. If your general- if your general fund is populated by 218 revenue, you can't use it that way. But you could use lake revenue, or if you had a cell tower lease, or-
$35,000 of it.
Yeah. So it'd be- you don't have a lot of- you've got some taxes, I guess, a couple hundred thousand.
150 or 250?
It's 200 or-
It's 300,000?
Wow.
Well, I need that subsidy.
So again, that's an optional process. It's not mandatory. You can implement that if you want.
Plus interest and rent?
And at my Aqua Region 2 meeting Monday, Tim Quinn came. He's the executive director of Aqua to talk about this. The reason stormwater's in there is because there's a coalition with League of Cities and CSAT California.
State Association of Counties.
Of our counties. So they're trying to build their power together. They're starting an initiative process, which is expensive, takes a lot of time to get signatures. But they felt that they need to do that to leverage the legislature to get what they want. Their hope is that the legislature will actually vote, two-thirds vote, to put it on the ballot in the way this coalition wants it. Dustin brought up some good concerns about how when you kind of open this Pandora's box, I guess is probably a good word. They kind of start feeding these legislatures with these ideas, and all of a sudden, they want to take it on their own and twist it their own way, and they get their two-thirds vote, and all of a sudden, we've got a constitutional amendment that-
We don't like.
We don't like. So it's a little dicey at this point, but you needed to be aware of it, and we're tracking it. It's got good positives in it, but it could also-
Currently.
Blow up.
Currently, it could- it benefits. I think it could be a benefit to PID in providing some options, maybe some defensibility with future 218 processes. But the risk is- you have this risk anytime you pursue legislation. You propose some language that works perfectly for you because you've crafted it. Then it goes into this meat grinder at the legislature, and what spits out may be something that's totally different that you can't live with. So there's been talk about a public goods charge in the legislature. I think I've talked to you about that in the past. It's basically a water tax. And this would be the type of vehicle that you can just see, maybe if somebody wants to push that issue, they would use a bill like this to try to accomplish that. Go ahead.
Quick question. Is this some of the type of stuff we're going to be going over in that public meeting that you're talking about with the board?
We'll talk about the Prop 218 process, not what might change, but what we're living with right now.
Right. Yeah, this isn't law yet.
Better have it during the day or early in the evening, you know, because it gets thick to me this time of night.
That's the other reason we wanted it to take.
You're not following me, Doug? Put me first on the agenda.
Just to interject something.
How many fingers?
You know, I have a grandson that's in law school, University of Ohio, who really likes it. God, I'd love to give the intern or do follow along with you because I really appreciate your activity.
I think that's off topic.
Yeah.
I know he's not going to go into water, but it would really be a great experience for him to watch you in here.
Have him call me. All right. So my next topics brief, JM Pipe case, the litigation. Remember, we've got a settlement from Formosa, the parent company. The settlement proceeds are just about ready to be filed with the court. So the figures we've talked about in the past, which are PID's share of that, are still about the same. I think they've gone up a couple dollars. Not a lot, but they're still in the $39,000 range. And that looks like it's going to be filed, maybe even this week, and hopefully distributed to the district within 60 days or so.
Do we have some of that pipe stacks out there yet still?
Yep.
What are we going to do with it?
We're going to keep it there until this court case gets done.
Is that after the cake or the case? You wouldn't even think about putting the ground of water in it.
This board actually put it in our standards. We don't allow that brand of pipe in our distribution system anymore. So, no, we wouldn't.
Because you don't know what it's going to say.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the price was right. The price was right, though.
Yeah.
I know some farmers of a certain ethnic part would be glad to take that pipe off your hands. Sell it to their neighbors. Anyway.
That's all.
That's it?
Dustin, you're, like Doug said, an exceptional attorney, but don't expect a bonus from the board.
I think he's doing quite well without a bonus.
We didn't even pay him this month.
Yeah.
We didn't even pay him this month, right?
That's right. We're holding back.
Yeah.
Staff and billing reports. Do any of- you know, the board members have had the opportunity to go through those? Is there anything that any board member would like to bring up or ask questions, clarify?
Yes.
Please.
On page 131, the use of the lake, and we're still, you know, we passed the 40 grand. We're headed to 45 now. It's been doing quite well compared to other years, and we got two more months to go on this thing.
Because it's open year-round.
Yeah. So we're doing all right.
Well, we haven't looked at the expenses yet.
Well, that didn't have anything to do with the expenses.
I don't think we're going to net more money.
Yeah, well.
We may take in more money, but we'll spend more money.
Well, I'm not going there because that's-
Got to show both sides three times.
Okay, on page 133, it says we're losing 8.2% in August.
That's because we're conserving 40%. Look at the red dot.
Losing 8.2%.
Red line always.
That's a strange explanation.
Look at the red.
We're not losing over 5%, though.
We're losing about the same amount of water, but we're delivering less, therefore the percentage goes up.
Goes up.
If the same explanation you keep giving me all this time.
Right. Unless we use the percent, it goes higher.
Yes, well, I'll just keep bringing it up. Monthly billing report on 135. I was surprised to see that we've sold some water to Deloro, Paradise Pines Magalia.
That's their water. It's not our water.
Oh, that's just the water we were wheeling?
That's a wheeling fee.
Yeah. So we get- are we still getting $900 an acre foot to wheel it for them?
No.
What are we getting?
I don't know off the top of my head. There's a calculation in the contract.
You're treating it, aren't you?
We're treating and delivering it, yeah.
Okay.
That's actually PTD water from Sterling Bluffs, is that what it is?
Sterling Bluffs, right, yes.
I know you're worried if PID could have got that.
Oh, yeah.
We already covered-
Yeah, he could have bought a lime saddle.
I was really rattling with them. Those two directors who were recalled because of that. Good friends of mine.
Let's go on to the treasures report.
Well, you're done. Maybe other people have stuff.
I don't know. I'm usually the one that dominates it, so.
I got one.
There you go.
Page 134, Aqua Hawk registered users. Is that- are we using meters still yet, or just people?
People.
That's how many Aqua Hawk customers.
Well, because I have four meters in it, I should get-
Water conservation. You have four meters?
Yeah.
Yeah, three mark.
I have four Aqua Hawk, but they're only counted as one.
95.
Well, they're only counted as one.
That's what I'll have to do.
Well, it's a little over 20% of our customers.
All four of those meters, do they run on the same property?
No, I got more property.
I don't?
I got four properties.
And 10 or 11.
They should each be separate.
They are separate. But on Aqua Hawk, they're counted as one. And Bill was worried that we didn't have enough people signing up. I'm trying to get more.
Sep, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Nope.
I do not either. I'll consider accepting this.
I move we accept the staff report for 2000- for September 2015.
I'll second that.
And the billing report, too.
And billing report.
I call for the question.
I'll say that.
Before Seth falls asleep down there.
Any comments from the public about any of our little graphs or things or something? Good.
You're really comfortable.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion passes 5-0.
I don't think we need the next one because Doug's already gone over it many times.
I've gone over it a couple times. I realize that.
Treasures report, please, Kevin.
We'll make a motion that we approve the treasures report as-
As Doug talked about it, as written.
See, John Hughes says that this report was back there, and it's a very well-done report. It says it all.
Okay, I have a motion, but no second.
I'll second it. I think the treasurer really wants to give his report. No, we're going to get out of here.
That's the question. It's 11 o'clock, folks.
But I'm going to ask Kevin to explain it, please.
So as you can tell, we have 5.400, 443,000 unrestricted, and that's going to change due to the fact that you just made that decision on the capacity fees. So that number will go up. And we have made a huge portion of our debt service payment in this first three months. So that should start trickling up, but it's not going to trickle up very fa- as fast as it did this last month. Obviously, our consumption revenue is down. Everything, all the operation, that was pretty much on pace for budget. We're working right on pace. Our pipeline projects are going in, and we'll be using the capacity fees going forward now to be paying for those pipeline projects that we're putting in.
What's that project costing us on pierces between up the hill to all the-
Not done yet. You'll know the number when it's done.
It's a big project. I don't know the estimate off the top of my head. We can- I can get that to you.
I have a dumb question.
That I think they run into a big rock.
Capacity fees were, you say, are 800, but here they say a million, too.
He's saying that-
We're going to be transferring 800.
Why aren't we transferring a million, too?
Because we have 800,000 of July 1st till now, pipeline.
Oh, these were before that. Okay. Isn't that a dumb question?
One thing I do want to say is that, and I think this was reiterated in the public comment, that Prop 218 is not a guarantee for rate increase.
No.
Today, we were trying, and that was my recommendation, we put something into place to kind of give us that ability that if that rate increase did not go into effect, that we would still be okay. I just want to say, if you- if this rate increase that we are trying to get doesn't go, then this board's going to have to make some very, very difficult decisions. And even with this rate increase, this board's going to have to make some very, very difficult decisions. And there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be very upset. And it's going to be in the best interest of this district to make sure that these- that this board makes those decisions to make sure this is- this district is back in financial health. So that's kind of my soapbox that I want to get on today.
Well, you know, someplace said the budget was making that reply. I really like looking at those things. You made that statement.
And I did, yes. And I made it during the budget. And I want to also say that you guys can definitely defend yourself. And people that say that we didn't make cuts, we made a ton of cuts in this budget. We did minimal capital in this budget. That was- all we did were things that were already approved by the board. So there was very, very- a lot of cuts that were already done and decided before today.
Can you put down on paper, now everyone kept saying, well, you're buying new trucks and this and that, and we built this thing, and all this happened before the drought.
Absolutely.
And so what we need is some back-up on that.
Claimed in the budget.
But when it- not when the things were done.
Larry?
Like, we haven't bought a truck since when. We haven't bought a- we haven't done anything on the buildings since when, you know? These things, because they all think that we've done this after the drought happened, and it's not true.
Larry, Tanya's in the audience, and she knows how to do that. Can help. She's helped on the publicity, and she could help Kevin write up a nice report.
Yeah.
We don't want- well, I'll answer that question.
He'll answer. I just think that it's a good thing to do to help us.
But I think that this board can defend themselves in that manner, that you guys have made cuts, you have had delayed projects, you've done things, and you've tried to make it the least impact on the customer. And right now, if things don't go as it's coming, it's going to be painful.
Painful, yeah.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
I move we approve the treasures report as presented.
Accept it.
Accept it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. No, Sep's already.
You got four seconds?
Call for the question.
I want to go to the public.
Oh, no.
Might even let you have more than five minutes now.
Wow.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, we are now into the director's comment sections. Bill, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll start by saying I just called my wife, and I told her I'd be home fifteen, twenty minutes, and that all is okay. So she worries terribly about these meetings because sometimes I make an ass out of myself. I didn't make, I'm a big ass out of myself tonight, but anyway. And with that, I'm gonna go out the door.
We'll dock your pay.
Yeah, I know.
We'll dock your pay.
Well, surprisingly enough, I mean, you know, I had a very tight one. I think we got a lot of stuff covered. And we're going to be fine. We've only got some major decisions to make down the road. It's gonna be great. We appreciate your public input. We could go on this 218 a lot. Come in here, listen. I'll keep it straight. I already knew that.
Thank you, Doug. Larry?
No comments.
Sep?
No comment.
And I have no comments. Meeting is adjourned.
Very good.